We are now live and I think we are ready to begin our deliberations for the evening. And so why don't we begin with reports from the virtual DICE and we'll begin with UVA.
All right, great. Thanks, Hosea. Yeah, I had a couple of things I just wanted to mention. The first is that since we last met, we had a pretty good collaboration in our office and facilities management at UVA with your facilities management at the city to provide some additional COVID-19 social distancing signage on the corner, mostly in the form of dots on the pavement which were not there before. So we identified a need and came up with a solution and turned it around. We would have turned it around in about a week, but it rained and so they had to delay installation for a few days. So even still, it was, you know, I thought it was a pretty good effort of collaboration and getting stuff done in a hurry. So I just wanted to mention that and thank the city for the help, you know, with getting that done. Also, just internally, we've been kind of on hold since COVID hit with our update to our grounds plan, which you might remember was last done in 2008. So it's been a while. And so we're now starting to move, get that moving again. So we've started some prep work on that. And then we've continued, you know, in terms of city UVA collaboration, we continue to comment and interact with both the Emmett Ivy Smart Scale or the Emmett Street Smart Scale Team and the Fontaine Avenue Smart Scale Team. So there's, you know, we've been able to have touch points with you guys on that. So. And then coming up in the next Board of Visitors meeting for us is in December. So I'm not sure exactly what's on the docket for that one, but that's the next one. So that's all I have.
And we, we have a new member, Liz Russell. Welcome. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, thank you. I'm so, I'm so excited to be here. My name is Liz Russell and I'll just, I have not served, I have not represented the Planning Commission or any committees yet, so I'll just give a little background of myself. I am currently the Assistant Director of Facilities and Planning at Monticello. I am originally from the Eastern Shore of Maryland, but I lived in New Orleans for several years and I've lived in the area for 10 years and in Charlottesville for eight. I, I've recently, well, it was 2017, I completed a renovation of a 101-year-old house in Belmont. You might hear the train in the background going by. My educational background is in historic preservation from Mary, from Mary Washington. And in 2013, I graduated from the Urban Environmental Planning Program at UVA, the master's program. I serve on several boards that are dedicated to housing and the built environment. And for two years, I've been a big sister to an amazing 12-year-old girl who is in the county school system. In this role, I am really looking forward to shaping a more equitable community that offers opportunities for all residents to succeed. I, as a planner, I feel like we have a duty to recognize that historically land use and zoning practices have had negative impacts, especially on people of color in our nation, and we know that's true right here in Charlottesville. I do strongly believe in the power of community engagement and the duty of elected and appointed officials to act with the best interest of the community in mind. I come from a preservationist background and I believe in the power of place, the power of stories, and the value of the built environment. But I don't think that we have to think of Jeffersonian as being the only historic architecture that has merit. I certainly don't think that. I've got some misconceptions. I also feel that older housing stock should and is part of the affordability and sustainability conversation. I'm looking forward to having those conversations in regards to our comprehensive plan update. And I'm just really excited to work with my, the fellow commissioners, council, staff, developers, and this wonderful community to see Charlottesville, help see Charlottesville live up to its full potential. Finally, I will be representing the Planning Commission on the Fontaine Avenue Steering Committee and on the Red Vanu River Planning Efforts Committee.
Welcome, welcome, Liz. Glad you're, glad you're with us. Mr. Tosenberg.
All right. Well, let me say, welcome Commissioner Russell. Good to have you on board. So the last month, we had a few meetings. One was my first meeting of the TJPD Commission, see, would be redundant, where discussed a few things. The big one is the rental, the COVID rental relief program that they've been running, got awarded another round of funding from the state. So that's good. More people can get rental relief. If you need rental relief, go to their website and you can apply. And we got some interesting stats on applications coming in. It seems like in the city in particular, many applications coming in are also getting funded from other programs that we're running, which is great. And so, yeah, it's been a fairly successful program so far, it seems. Let's see, Place, it's also continuing to meet, to agonize over its future. So we had a meeting, I guess it was the last Thursday, a little while ago, to, again, sort of see what the future of Place is. After some resignations of the Chair and Vice Chair, everyone sort of came to the realization that, you know, since the end of several major projects from several years ago, it's been a little bit visionless recently. And so we're, we're kind of trying to come up with some ways that the committee can be helpful as a sort of brain trust of talented individuals who work in architecture and industry to help the city achieve its goals. I think those are the only meetings I've had since our last one. So that's all I got. Thanks.
Great. Reverend.
Yes. In September, on 16th, I attended the Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee for the Thomas Jefferson Transportation District. They reviewed their smart scale funding that worked, that they're collaborating regionally with VDOT and hoping that the, the city becomes a recipient of some of those funds. A lot of discussion about how COVID has affected streetscapes with restaurants encroaching in on previously non-pedestrian areas. And there, there was no actions taken, but doesn't look that, like that's going to end anytime soon. And I think that was about the extent of that meeting. There were, there were no, no actions taken that affect the city directly. And that's the end of my report.
News Dow.
First, I want to start off by saying, welcome to Liz. I'm Ms. Russell. I'm glad to have you. And I don't have necessarily a report. I do have three announcements I would like to make. So on October 1st, the CDBG slash Home Proposal opened up. So if anybody is interested in applying for those funds, please go to the city's website. They are, the application is available. Also, on October the 22nd, we have our annual CIP committee meeting coming up. That's going to be from 1:00 to 3:00. That is also virtual that I'll be attending and then-
That is for the school board.
Yes, sorry. Yes, that is for the school board. The annual school board CIP committee meeting will be meeting October 22nd from 1:00 to 3:00 virtually. And then lastly, I'll be attending the Ridge Street Task Force meeting, which will be October 28th from 4:00 to 5:00. Thank you.
Mr. Silliet.
Welcome to Ms. Russell. We are stronger with you. The Civil Plans Together met on, doesn't matter what it meant. We discussed land use ideas and housing ideas, including some, some interesting demos that I think you'll probably see today. Nothing, oh, and reformatting the hack, which comes up. That's what I know. Thank you.
Mr. Littler.
Oh, and also, welcome to Ms. Russell. The Board of Architectural Review met on September 15th. We had four Certificate of Appropriatenesses granted and two were deferred after we requested more information. We had two preliminary discussions on future projects and then we had a wonderful follow-up visit to a very unusual house Hartman, on Hartman Mill Road to inspect an outbuilding that's being proposed for demolition. But the house itself has a very checkered and long history and is very tucked away. The Tree Commission met September 23rd. We mostly spent our time reviewing metrics for the past three fiscal years. And those metrics were telling us that we have missed our annual goal. We, the city, has missed the annual goal of planting 200 trees a year. We've only planted about 110 on average and yet, at, at the same time, the city has removed because of decay and, and storm damage and development, about 100, a little over 100. So we're going nowhere fast. Over the 10-year period ending in 2014, we've lost 5% canopy from 50 to 45% tree canopy. And that, that 5% equates to about 420 acres of trees. And then looking at neighborhoods and tree canopy, we identified Star Hill and Tenth and Page as neighborhoods that have less than 20% tree canopy, which, which is a critical, high-stress level of, of lack of tree canopy. 40% is healthy. And it has repercussions not only on health, but also economic repercussions and costs of energy. And, well, mostly just cost of energy. And, but the, the health benefits or the health deficits are severe. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Good reporting. Thanks. So the Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec hasn't met in months, but I got some really great news I'd like to share with you. Last week at the Virginia Recreation and Parks Society Conference, we got a major award. And the award was for the best new facility for each city of our size. And that was the award for the skate park. And as you guys know, I've been talking about the skate park quite a bit, so I am, I am pretty geeked that we were able to get this award. So we want to congratulate Vic and the entire Parks and Rec team for the work that they did to get us this award. I, I'm pretty proud of those guys. So good for them. Let's see, on September 15th, the, the Budget Staff hosted a meeting. And the meeting, that meeting was attended by Counselor Snook and Counselor McGill. And I represented us at that meeting. We learned that there is about $129 million that we're looking to spend on capital improvements between 2022 and 2027. To me, I believe that we're looking at allocating about $50 million of that $120 million to the school system. That, this may iterate, but that, that was a current thinking back on September 15th. The rest of the money, a number approaching 80 million bucks, will be used to, to work down the backlog of existing things that have already been approved by council. The thinking is we will not add any new projects until we get a chance to work down that backlog. And the thinking is we want, don't want, and this is thinking, it may iterate, because there was a second meeting with other members of council that I didn't make. But at that meeting, the thinking was, again, working down the existing backlogs. A lot of backlog, we, we, we've got that of approved stuff that we haven't got too that we're going to work down. And the thinking is that in the COVID-19 environment, we want to be very cautious about adding new, new things until we get, get our hands on what's going on with that. And again, we've got $80 million worth of projects in a backlog that we need to work down. So the thinking from staff is we'll work through that. Missy, there is a work session in public hearing on the December meeting, right? Yes. She says yes. So I think that's it. Missy, what do you got?
I'll just piggyback, I'll piggyback on that since, since you started talking about that. The, the CIP is, is definitely going to be a bit different this year. It's different, definitely on the staff side. We, we have a shortened scoping and mainly the, the idea is to focus on the items that were approved in last year's CIP and only make small adjustments as needed to that. Given the, the fact that it took a little bit longer to get to this point because of, well, just the world that we're in. The, the hearing for the CIP this year will be in December. Since we don't have a specific work session at this point in time, we're not going to, to have that. They'll provide all the overview. We will have a brief session with Ms. Russell to bring her up to speed on the basics of the CIP, since she's, she's new to the commission. But we, the budget staff will come and give the presentation in December. It appears generally things are going to look very similar to what they looked like last year from a CIP standpoint. And like Mr. Mitchell said, not, not new things, just trying to get a handle on the things that we have now. So we'll be looking forward to that in December. But before that, in November, on the 10th, we are going to have a joint work session with City Council on our regular day. We have one public hearing for that meeting and then we anticipate the rest of the meeting to be dedicated to a joint public hearing with our consultants on the housing plan. So the housing plan of the Charlottesville Plans Together project is coming, has a, has a good draft and that should be out for public consumption in the next week or so. And at that point in time, there'll be probably about a month's time where they're going to be reaching out to different groups and taking them through the draft and receiving comments. And one of those opportunities will be on November 10th with the Planning Commission and City Council to, to get some feedback on that. With the goal of taking the housing plan to council late this year for some endorsement so that the next steps, which end up being some of the things we'll be talking about later tonight with the consultants, making sure that the chapters and the goals and objectives that come through that, if the housing plan is, is in shape where people feel like it's the direction we can go in, it will speak to that next document. And so we'll have some time, there'll be some timeframes and how that's going to work that the consultants will talk with us a little bit about tonight. But that's just a primer. We'll, we'll be having a, a pretty lively discussion, hopefully, or at least getting a lot of good education together. I will note, we've, we've got a lot of behind-the-scenes kind of things going on. Chair Mitchell and I met with Representatives of County and we're talking through some potential for conversations in, from a joint standpoint. And we'll, we'll let you guys know how, how that's coming together once, once we get there. But we're, we're trying to get back to kind of our normal world and our not-normal world. And, you know, we'll, we'll take it step by step. But otherwise, we have, I'll note this since I noted it in the pre-meeting in case someone wasn't there. We have site plan conferences virtually now. And so there's a number of those that have been scheduled. There are a lot of mailings and virtual opportunities to participate in that process that are going on. And so with the last grouping that we, we got in, we are currently back up to speed on different applications. And so everything in our office at this point is moving forward in some sort of manner. So we anticipate that probably at the first of the year, we'll start to have a little bit more robust agendas. So, you know, just something, something for us to keep in mind. That's it.
So Mr. Rice, you may or may not be aware that we are not recording. Do we need to be recording?
Chair Mitchell, we are recording on my end and we also have redundancy on our streaming service.
This little button up at the top that says it's paused. But okay, we're good.
Mine says it's recording.
Okay, maybe this is mine. Okay, cool. All right, we are now ready for matters to presented by the public that are not on the formal agenda. So if there are folks in the lobby that would like to talk to us about the work that we're doing, that that is not represented on the, on the formal agenda, that would be the Family Day Homes piece that we're going to talk about. This would be your opportunity to do that. So Mr. Rice, is there anyone in the lobby that would like to chat with the commission?
Okay, Chair, we have about 22 in attendance today. And if you'd like to address the commission during this time, just please click the raise hand icon, or if you're joining us by phone, press star nine. We will call on you on the order of hands raised. And once we enable your audio, please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes for comment. And no takers now, Chair.
All right, we, we've got all three counselors, Missy and Ms. Chrissy. Do we need to wait till 6:00?
Yes, we need to, we need to hit the 6 o'clock hour on the dot.
Mr. Rice, would you ask once before if there's anyone who'd like to comment before I put us in recess?
Sure. If anybody in attendance would like to address Planning Commission at this public comment portion of time, please click the raise hand icon or press star nine if you're joining us by phone.
And it might be worth mentioning, so the Grove Street discussion is not a public hearing, right? So if anyone wants to talk on that, now is the time?
Yep.
And no hands raised, Chair.
Right, we will be in recess until 6:00. Thanks.
[laughing]
All right, yeah, I didn't realize this was muted. I see Councilor Hill's look and and Payne, welcome, guys. Good to see you. All right, I think we are now ready to begin part two of our deliberations. And we've got, um, one application that we need to review. The application number is ZM two zero dash one zero dash zero two. And this is for Family Day Homes, um, childcare. The proposed amendment, the pro, the proposed is, is an amendment to chapter thirty-four of the zoning ordinance. And the objective is to, uh, one, bring us in line with the state code. But we'd also like to update the use matrix to allow, uh, family day homes to provide care for one to four children as a by right in all zoning districts allowing residential use. We'd also like to allow family day homes to provide care for five to twelve children as a provisional use in zoning, to all zoning districts allowing for residential use. This is particularly important in the era of, uh, in the COVID nineteen era, where we're all struggling to find ways to work and to make sure that our children are cared for and educated. And I want to thank, uh, Mr. Soliates for leading the way and getting the, getting the conversation started. So, Ms. Chrissy, I believe you have the lead on this?
Um, yes, I'll be providing the, the report. Um, I, I did want to make sure that we, uh, cross all of our Ts, dot our As and have council call themselves formally to order.
I can call council order.
All right. All right, so this is a proposed text amendment, uh, to provide updates to the use matrices definitions and add a new section to the zoning ordinance to provide revisions for family day home, uh, use. Um, so in, um, uh, the commission brought this forward as, as a, an item for us to work through and review. We brought a draft to, uh, the Planning Commission in August, and, uh, we've made some revisions based on, uh, some of the comments and, uh, discussion that was held at that point in time. Uh, I do want to give an overview of, of the changes that are being proposed, uh, for this code. Um, in addition, um, I, I'm a resource for this, but also our zoning administrator, Reed Broadhead is on the call and will be able to assist with questions as well. He, as well as our assistant zoning administrator, spent a lot of time, um, putting together, uh, information on this because they spend the time enforcing these things and making sure that people are complying and getting the correct permits and, and such. And, uh, they have a lot of experience, uh, with this, with other types of permits. And so, uh, that was very valuable as we were moving forward with this. Um, so there are a number of, uh, updates to the matrices, the zoning matrix, um, that would take place. So we clarify for family day home, one to four children would be a by right use in all areas that allow for residential. Um, in addition, uh, there would be an allowance for family day home, five to twelve children um, as a provisional use in all areas that allow for residential occupancy. And these numbers are based on, uh, the state legislation changes that have occurred. Um, and so that will get us in line with that. Um, and it will, um, allow for some clarity for moving forward. If you're one to four, there's one route that you go. If there's five to twelve, there's a different route that you go. If you're in a different, if you're twelve plus, it's, it's a diff, a whole different round, but we're not talking about that this evening. Um, we also had, um, proposed some changes to the definitions in order to clarify this. Um, under the definition for family day home, um, we added in language that noted that, uh, the residential use must lawfully be established prior to having the family day home. So you have to have a legal residence there in order to, to, to have a family day home. And that, that definitely makes it super clear, you gotta be a residence. Um, and for occupancy, we, we noted, um, clarity that one to four family day home is, uh, considered a regu, residential occupancy, and that is in line with the state as well. Um, we added a section that's specific to the provisional use section that relates directly to, uh, family day home and, uh, has a different, a number of provisions that one would have to adhere to in order to do that. Um, just as a reminder to everyone, a provisional use permit means that if you, um, as, uh, someone in our community can adhere to all of the code regulations that are laid out in the code, you fill out an application form, you, you turn it in and then you, it's, it's analyzed and then you can move forward. Um, right now, in order to do that, this, uh, for family day home in the five, well, five to to twelve range, uh, you have to go through a special use permit process, um, which is costly. It's time, requires a lot of time. Um, and, um, you know, there, there was a thought that having something that's a little bit more straightforward that notes what the rules are, and if you can adhere to the rules, then you can move forward. Um, there are also, uh, state, uh, licensure requirements for family day homes that are five to twelve. And so there are a number of things that someone is already having to do in order to, um, to become a provider. And there are a number of, uh, public input opportunities as part of this process too. And so, um, though we wouldn't be going through the public process such as a special use permit process, there is still a public process that's involved to allow the neighbors to know what's being requested to happen, and there's a procedure to go through for that. Um, so one of the big things that was a discussion point for you all in August, um, was working through hours of operation. Um, and, uh, that, that tends to be where, um, you know, there's a lot of discussion because this is, uh, this is, this is a, you know, it's an added item to a neighborhood. And so, um, trying to be conscious of, of allowing it as well as having some parameters um, for the community is pretty important. Um, so we started out at the meeting in August with the boundaries that we have for our home occupation and for some of our other items, and then through discussion with the commission, um, item three, which I'll read really quickly in the provisions, uh, noted that no clients or employee shall be allowed to visit the property on which a family day home is conducted earlier than six AM or later than eleven PM. Uh, the family day home may operate up to twelve hours within each tw- twenty-four hour period. So it allows for a flexible timeframe. Um, but it does keep in mind that this is a, a use that is, um, in addition to your standard residential use, and so it keeps that in mind as well. Um, so as I noted, both Reed and I are available for questions. Um, this item is before you this evening for public hearing, so we may have some speakers. Um, at this point, we haven't had any speakers prior to the meeting, um, that have, uh, provided any additional comments. Um, but we're here for any sort of questions that you all might have.
I will, we'll, um, we'll have discussion, uh, a little later after the public comments, but does anyone have any questions for Ms. Chrissy or for Reed?
I had one quick question. Um, my big concern is, uh, so some places had, uh, five to twelve child family day homes as by right before. And under this change, uh, they'll change to provisional use permit. Um, thinking about like R three McIntyre Ridge and the B districts. Um, and I get that provisional use is not a very high burden, uh, but what was the driver behind adding that additional step uh, in those districts, just for consistency or?
It was, it was more consistency-based, um, since the numbers changed from our current code. So our current code says one to five and then six to twelve, which is not in line with where the state is. And so in the process of aligning those numbers, it made sense to do that. It, it, it wouldn't be an onerous burden on someone, um, because they're having to do many, many more things in order to get their state licensure anyway. Um, it'll just be one more opportunity for, um, mainly for tracking um, and understanding where, uh, where these locations may be. Um, but yeah, no, we did, we, we had a, you know, conversation about how, how to handle that and that, that was the consistency part, and then it's, it's a lot less, um, confusing.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Any other questions? Any, any questions from council?
One question that I have is, um, it's been, geez, at least twenty-five years since I've personally had to worry about childcare. But as I recall, back, back then, uh, one of the big problems was always, uh, how you, how somebody who needed extended hours would, would cope. And in particular, the discussion, uh, often dealt with, uh, people, like people who work a night shift who needed basically someplace to, to stash the kid all night. And, uh, now, un, under this scheme, uh, that would seem, as I'm understanding it, to not be permitted, uh, in at least any, either one to, one to four or five to twelve. And I, I guess that my question was, A, is that still a significant need in the community? B, uh, are, are we meeting it successfully? And C, should we be doing something to, to make it easier for people with that need to get useful childcare?
Well, and, and we did, we spent quite a bit of time talking about that as well. That was, that was part of the discussion with the commissioners in August, um, concerning multiple shifts that different, uh, individuals may have. Um, and, uh, trying to accommodate, uh, that as well as trying to account for the fact that this is, um, an additional use in a residential area and trying to, trying to kind of buffer between, between the two of those things. And so, um, our thinking with this is that, um, there, the one to four is allowable by right. Anybody can do that. Um, and there's no time restrictions on that. And so if you have something that's very small, um, and you have, you know, the need for an overnight opportunity, that wouldn't be something that we would be regulating at all. But once you start getting into having, you know, five to twelve children, you've got additional impacts that are coming into the neighborhoods and having a consistent timeframe of when those things may be occurring. Uh, we felt that would, that would be important.
So what are the rules that would apply to, I'm just using an example, a place like Westminster Childcare Center, which, uh, clearly has more than twelve kids? Are they subject to, uh, to hourly requirements, limitations like this?
So some of the daycare centers in the city, um, some of those are by special use permit, and they have time limitations that are, are built into the special use permits. Um, some are older and have been there a long time and may not have those same limitations, but it would be a, a completely different category than the fam, family day home use, which is, uh, very much focused on being compatible with residential use.
I suppose it doesn't really matter to this particular issue, but I'm just, I'm just curious about how well that need is being met and by whom is it being met?
Well, um, I, 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 you know, antidote-ally, I know that, that, uh, UVA has a program that, uh, that does work with people who are on that late shift, um, from a daycare standpoint and, and a lot of smaller, there's smaller opportunities within the community. We haven't, um, we haven't been made aware of, of a contingency of, of people concerning that need. Um, and it's definitely something that could be re- revisited at a, at another time if we find that, that there is a significant need for that.
Okay.
Basically, oh, sorry, 'cause, um, excuse me, that was also one of the questions or concerns that I had. Um, when we talked about this the last time, was the hours of operation for those people who are ten, essential workers who either don't get off until eleven o'clock or are working the overnight shift and not maybe going in until eleven. Um, and I'm just wondering, being that it is a special use permit, if a care provider, um, was finding that they needed to be able to provide those hours to their clients, is that not something that they can come back to the city and request?
Well, if we do, if, if this moves forward by provisional use permit, then they would be within the parameters of what the code gives. And so the code provides a, for a five to twelve, it would provide for, uh, any twelve hours that they chose between the six AM and eleven PM, uh, timeframe. So they would have some flexibility and, um, the, the person who's doing the family day home would, would provide us with what their plan is for how, how they would work through that. And if they decide that that isn't what's working, um, then they can give us a new plan. Um, this is mainly just trying to, to understand where, where these locations are. Um, they are also going to be regulated by the state. So the five to twelve are regulated by the state. They're going to have to go through all state requirements, um, at that point in time. And we, we spent, as a staff, after we had the discussion with the commission, we spent a lot of time, you know, trying to troubleshoot all of these different types and scenarios. And this was one that we spent a lot of time on because we know we have a lot of people in the community that do have, um, shifts that are different. Um, but we thought, uh, that leaving it completely open-ended um, was not, not a good way to do it to start. Um, and that, uh, if someone was to have overnight, um, have daycare overnight, um, that it would more likely be in the one to four range, which is by right. Um, and then if we found that there was something significant occurring in the community where we needed to revisit that at some other point in time, um, that we could look at it through that lens. But we haven't had, um, we haven't had discussions from, or concerns from folks specific to that. Um, so, uh, you know, we wanted to, we wanted to put in a large parameter, which allowed a lot of flexibility for the providers, um, yet have some parameters so that they would be moving forward with a plan.
Any other questions?
I do have one other question. I note that the definition of family day home talks about serving one to twelve children exclusive of the provider's own children and any children who reside in the home. Is there a similar definitional phrase that would apply to one to four? Oh, actually, I guess, does family day home describe both one to four and five to twelve?
Correct.
Okay, so it applies either way. That's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, so that, that is kind of an added flexibility i- in there that's built into, to the definition.
Yeah, gotcha. Thank you.
Any questions from you, Ms. Hill? Hey, Mr. Payne, okay. Any, uh, comments, uh, Bill, um, UVA? Any comments from?
No, I'm okay on this one. Thanks.
Okay. All right, if there are no more questions or comments, I'm going to open it up to public comment. So we are now in the public comment session. Mr. Rice, is anyone in the lobby that would like to speak?
Anyone in attendance would like to speak at this time, uh, please click the raise hand icon or press star nine if you're calling in. No hands raised, Chair.
All right, Mr. Soliates, I'll let you lead us in our conversation.
Sure. So, uh, this would really open my eyes on this, uh, if you'll recall, was a New York Times article describing the, the issue. Um, and realizing that we are a smaller area where we already had significant, um, childcare, uh, provision problems when things were normal and, and, and fine. Um, now things are harder. Um, so my hope initiating this was to find a, 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 a useful way to solve this problem. From what I see, this solves that problem. I think the staff has done a perfect job. Must anyone else has further comment? I'm comfortable making a motion.
Well, you can make a motion and if people want to chat more afterwards, we can do that. So please.
That sounds perfect. I wish to move to recommend approval of this zoning text amendment to the text of chapter 34, zoning ordinance of the city of Charlottesville, 1990, as amended to provide updates to family day home uses to include section 34-420, 34-480, and 34-796 use matrices to allow family day home one to four children as a by right use in all zoning districts, which allow residential use, to allow family day home five to 12 children as a provisional use in all districts, which allow for residential use, to update section 34-1200 definitions under family day home to confirm a lawfully established residential use prior to implementing a family day home and under occupancy residential, to clarify that the family day home one to four children use is considered residential occupancy, and to add a section to article nine, generally applicable regulations, division nine, standards for provisional use to provide regulations for family day home of five to 12 children by provisional use on the basis that the changes would serve the interests of public necessity, convenience, general public welfare, and good zoning practice.
I'd like to second that motion.
All right, is there any more discussion? It is now. Do you have any other thoughts?
No, like I said, other than, you know, it sounds like we're able to have some flexibility if we have, if we find that we have that need for that overnight shift. So that was my only concern. A second.
Cool. Ms. Creasy.
Sure. Mr. LaHondro.
Hi.
Mr. Soli Yates.
Hi.
Ms. Dow.
Hi.
Mr. Heaton.
Hi.
Mr. Stolzenberg.
Hi.
Ms. Russell.
Hi.
And Mr. Mitchell.
Hi. Right, the motion passes. Ms. Robinson, Ms. Creasy, Reed, and Mr. Soli Yates, congratulations and thank you guys for your leadership on this. I think this is important. It looks like Justin just dropped in, so let's go on to the yeah, we're ready for the work session.
Thank you. If you don't mind, Chair Mitchell, I'm gonna duck out at this point.
Oh, really?
Sorry.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Right, so I think Mr. Alpie is leading this conversation. Matt, are you on?
Yes.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready, just let me know.
I think we're ready to go.
All right, Commissioners, tonight, you're you're out of your public hearing and you're now holding a work session. And this work session is going to be on a proposed development located at 1613 Grove Street Extended, 1611 Grove Street Extended, and Zero Grove Street Extended. The subject property is approximately 0.65 acres and is currently undeveloped. But actually, it's covered in a lot of kudzu. The subject property has frontage on Valley Road Extended, extended, which is an improved city maintained right of way and frontage on Grove Street Extended, which is an unimproved, unmaintained city right of way. The applicant is proposing 20 units of residential development within four buildings. In order for the development to proceed at this at this density and building style, the applicant would need to, one, get approval of a rezoning from the existing R2 residential two families to R3 residential multifamily. And as a reminder, the city cannot impose any conditions on a rezoning request, but the applicant may offer proffered conditions if they desire. At this time, no proffers have been put forward by the applicant. But the applicant has put forward a development plan related to the rezoning, which is tied to the development, which is attachment A and C in your package. The developer would also need to get approved a special use permit to increase the density from a by right 21 DUA, and that by right is if the rezoning went through. So if it was rezoned to R2, which you can only have two units per lot, to R3, you actually get into your density range. So you would have a by right density of 21. So they would need a special use permit to go from 21 DUA to 30 DUA to have 20 units and adjust the set and adjust the setbacks. You can see the chart on page two of the staff memo. And as a reminder, the the city can impose conditions on granting an SUP. These conditions should mitigate the impact for the use, in this case, the increased density is the use, if any are needed. They would also need approval of a waiver to the city's critical slope zoning ordinance. If you look on page five of the staff memo, you see the red shaded areas that indicate critical slopes as defined by the zoning ordinance, and the blue is defined by the subdivision ordinance. The applicant is currently working with the city engineer engineering department to ensure this information on that map is correct. There's some question whether that map is correct, so they're currently working with the city engineer on that. At your work session tonight, the applicant will give a presentation and provide you with more background information. Keep in mind, this is very early in the process, and the applicant has yet to hold a community, the required community engagement meeting. After the presentation, staff and the applicant are available to answer questions as you talk about ways the project, you know, areas you want the applicant to focus on. The questions in the staff memos are meant really as a guide. The goal of this work session is to give the applicant feedback so they can better shape their proposed development as they move forward. And with that, I can answer any procedural questions. And then we can jump into the presentation from the applicant. And then we can jump back to your discussion and asking questions of both staff and the applicant.
Right, so questions for Mr. Alpie? Are we ready for the applicant? I dig it from the silence that we're ready for the applicant. So, Justin, where are you?
Good evening, everyone. Matt, I think you'll put my presentation back up. Is that how this will work? Thank you. I'm Justin Schimpf. It's good to see all of you all again, a different format than last time. Haven't been to City Planning Commission a little while. I've been busy in Albemarle working on some different housing projects and making some progress there on people rethink density and housing types and how that affects the communities. We've got some good projects approved there, some pocket neighborhoods and a really interesting rezon we did up on 29 North, but good to be back in the city and just do a brief presentation I have and give you our take on how this site lays out, how what we proposed, how fits in our mind, what should be there. If you go to the next slide. Yes, thank you. So quick zoning overview, and I real I realize that the staff report you have has much of this in it. Zoning you're familiar with will be R2, because we're right across the railroad tracks from a variety of higher density zoning districts. And this is one of the few undeveloped parcels left in that entire neighborhood, which is a mix of duplexes and single family houses. It's interesting, side note, when I first moved to Charlottesville to go to UVA from from Amherst, just south of town, back in years ago, I lived right across a Valley Road Extended from this site in one of those little duplex buildings there. So I have some familiarity. It's been a number of years, but hasn't changed a lot over time. Next slide, please. Our site plan, and what we did here is the colored buildings there represent the footprint of the structure. If you see the overlap, the parking a bit, we're trying to give additional green space and usable recreational space for tenants by occupying some of that impervious area with the building above. And I'll cut some better illustrations and rendering that show this well. And next slide, please. Quick summary, as you heard, we're proposing four, five complexes, a missing middle sort of housing type that truthfully is really hard to find a home for. We end up with zoning districts that are the mixed use types, and those just want to be four or five story apartment buildings, and that's fine. But there's a need for this sort of housing product, and we viewed this site as one where we could give it a try, and I'll go into some of the other reasons why this works here. There are some setback modifications, although if you were to go back to the site plan, the the main modification really is there's a 50 foot building setback from sort of any structure in R3 to a low density residential, which is, you know, maybe if you had a six or eight foot eight story building would be appropriate. We're talking about heights just above the R2 by right. So we're asking for a reduction of that down to as little as 14 feet on one side. I have a section that I'll show you kind of illustrating why we think that's reasonable. And then on the side towards the railroad tracks is actually a city right of way there that would normally have a 25 foot setback, and we're looking for a five foot setback. That's part of our special use permit. So if we could then press two slides forward. One of the interesting things about these this housing type is it's really not a lot different from, let's say, the other more traditional things you've seen. I looked at the Stribling Avenue Plan that I think you all saw a few weeks ago, and there's a a series of townhomes in that. And so, for example, a three unit townhome building is 60 by 40, 2,400 square feet. Our building is, I think, 2,200 square feet roughly, a little bit of a regular shape, and then a duplex might be 1,500 square feet roughly. So we're kind of in between those two, but we house, you know, five units in place of three at a townhome and a pretty similar structure size. And then if we could go to the next slide. Pair a couple rough sort of perspectives on this, and I have some cross sections too that could walk through. These we added in since the original submittal. One thing I did want to point out was the treatment along the stream. There is a stream along the front of the property. And our vision for that would be to build a retaining wall on the building side, which you can see in this image, and then restore the other side with some new plantings to really stabilize and improve the stream bank. The site's essentially overrun with kudzu. And the stream has a variety of old concrete boulders and other things in it that I don't think are doing a lot of those opportunities for improvement as it do have a fair amount of width on the street side to work with. You know, these structures are truly trying to fit in that missing middle frame, which you can see here is they look a bit like a large house. It's that's parked underneath. It's three stories and has some bedrooms up in the attic. But maybe it's a little taller than your normal Park Street, you know, large house that you see or on Locust Avenue. But it's not dissimilar in form from a large single family house. We just happen to fit five families of type or individual sets of individuals in the structure. The perspective at the bottom, sort of looking back towards the railroad track view, kind of a cutaway and shows our parking, we've got a between the two buildings, a covered sort of community space that's got a trellis basically, and then a tree in the middle of it. So we've got a space there for folks, and there's other recreational spaces around, which we can talk about, but obviously it'd be more detailed in the site plan. If you go to the next slide. Similar view of the whole of all four units, I think the ones that we provided earlier give a little better illustration of the stream, the wall, but this gives you a little sense of the buildings behind up on the cul-de-sac as to where they're located relative to the structure. And then next slide. But these cross sections are probably the most helpful to illustrate how this type fits into this location. I think what you'll see is that section A is looking from Valley Road Extended your left, looking up towards the house behind. And there's such a grade drop that we would essentially cut our units into the hillside, and we lose a whole story and change and a retaining wall in the back. So compared to the units behind, we're we're sure, even though we're taller in structure height, we sit 20 feet lower in grade, and therefore we don't have any sort of overshadowing effects, which could be the case on a different lot with these sized structures. Even still, I say that we're talking about 40 feet versus the 35 foot normal maximum height. So it's not a big difference, but they are larger. And we recognize that's a potential impact, but we also think this site lends itself very well. Similar to the view, looking straight on to the units, there is a duplex, a traditional duplex to our right on that section BB. It's a decent distance away, and it's also sits up on a hill, but that gives some this some idea of the scale of that structure and the distance it is from our particular development. And there's one more slide. Yes, I'll end with this, but just to give you some sense of what we're thinking about landscaping, and particularly along the stream, there's some photos in the left of some of the species that would be more appropriate for that stream bank than what's there. And so we would imagine essentially to building a wall on one side at the edge of the stream bank where it already is, it wouldn't impact the water. And then we would widen out the stream bank and stabilize the other side. So I think collectively, if you look at the staff report, Matt had a few questions, and one of them was about the density and the form. And if I could just leave you with the the thought of, you know, density is, I don't know, I I've grown to really dislike it. It is been a tool used for a lot of frankly, evil purposes at times over our history of zoning. And as I've been through this in the last 10 years, working sort of projects, we never really changed the, you know, the buildable footprint, right, of a a site based on density. The lower the density is, the more money people have that live there is essentially the end result. So when I look at something like this, I look at, yes, it is above sort of the comprehensive plan number, but that's a number. And the question is, is the form, is the purpose fit with the comprehensive plans really trying to get at, which is housing for a broad variety of folks in the community, and I think this does that. And the other one question that came up that I thought was important is the environmental impacts. And I hope that you could just illustrate from the pictures and see from our intent with the stream that we feel like we can really come out far better after development than what's there now from an environmental standpoint, which protecting the stream both during construction, but critically afterwards, making it something more suitable. So I think that's the main bullet points I wanted to go over, and I am happy to answer any questions that you all have. And I'm interested, obviously, in your opinions as we move forward with this. Yes, no changes that could improve it, things of that nature. So appreciate the time, and I'm looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
So just, you know, I'm gonna open it up here, but I just want to ask Matt a question. Matt, the way the they organize the entrances, the entrance and exit, is that going to work? Is that gonna meet our our requirements?
In what regard, as far as width or as far as like number of entrances?
All of the above. I mean, the way they've managed the entrance and exits is, I mean, they're they're it's all in one one spot. You're coming in and going up the same place, pretty much.
Yeah, I mean, that would fall within the code. There's not a two for this dense of a development. We got rid of the the unit count that required a second entrance.
Got it. Cool. Right. So feedback.
Well, I'll jump in. Hi, Justin. Thanks for sharing. And of course, as always, you know, my main concern is where's the affordability of this project? Where we want price point with your units and pretty much who are you marketing to for this project?
Sure. Well, I think we have, I have to remember that the unit count, I think we have some one bedrooms in there, and I'll be, you know, upfront, we haven't gone through like a what price point each unit is at. The idea is to provide some variety. I think this would be, or I call one bedroom sort of situation or two bedroom is inherently designed for folks working around neighborhood. There are four bedrooms that I think are probably more student oriented. So this this neighborhood is sort of some of each. I was a student and I lived there, but I had roommates who were not in the same building. And so I do think that there'll be a mix in this building. It probably leans a little bit student wise. But because we have a mixture of units, there's certainly opportunity for other folks who need housing in the area, but we haven't pinned down in order to be proper looking affordability components yet. We understand that'll be a discussion moving forward, but I have not gotten to a a set committed level on that at this moment.
Thank you. I did just want to say that I'm I have some heartburn knowing that we have a housing crisis that you just told me that you are about to ask for a special use permit for student housing. That that causes me a little pain right here. So I'm just being completely transparent. They UVA has the structure for their students, and at this point, I feel like as a city, we should be focusing on housing the people of the city and not necessarily providing new housing for students that is off ground, but that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Or you look like you're ready to jump in. Yeah, you you look like you're 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 planning to jump in.
Are you talking to me?
Are you talking to me? I'm ready to.
Okay, well, if you're ready to jump in, Liz.
Well, I uh that is a good segue, I think, because um. Justin, you uh, one thing that kind of stuck out to me um was that you referenced. In your application, the um the Cherry Avenue Small Area Plan and um. I think that that. Well, I don't think that. That was a document um developed reflecting the plan that reflecting the. Um, vision of those in the Cherry Avenue, you know, vicinity, but mainly that study focused on the Cherry Avenue corridor. So there were some items that you pulled from that um report that uh. You know, around um affordability, um uh. Comprehensive, you know, meeting elements of the comprehensive plan that. Don't um. Aren't entire, you know, they're not really relevant to that area of the of the Cherry Avenue Master Plan of this particular site because that that. Was tertiary to um to that report. So. Uh, if we were to look into the Cherry Avenue Small Area Plan, you would see uh, you will see. The residents um commenting on their desire that new development be in keeping with the existing. Um, development patterns that building heights be limited, um that setbacks be respected and and density be maintained. And that's, you know, something that's certainly worth talking about in the broader picture of affordable housing, but um. It doesn't talk about a desire for uh UVA student housing.
I guess I if I could respond to that just quickly. We don't have an objection to really um limiting four bedrooms and going with, you know, units that are more. Local oriented. It has this odd coinci- odd thing of increasing our density, right? So it'd be a higher number, but in the exact same number of bedrooms. So uh, that's. Not at all objectionable to us. So that's where that needs to be. I think what we find, you know, like, say. When I, and I have, obviously, I haven't tried to rent an apartment around there in a long time, but. Because there is still inadequate infrastructure for students, they do trickle out to lots of neighborhoods, which takes away. Housing from others and the university may eventually, hopefully, will provide adequate housing for. All the students, grad students and everything, but till that happens, it's always going to be an issue. Um, but that said, if if. Our design focus should be more towards uh families and folks, you know, not student orientated. I don't, that's not objection to us. And I do, I understand that the, you know. Small airplane didn't really touch into this property. There is a desire of folks to, you know, broadly, I respect. The form and development in their neighborhoods and I totally get that. And I think. What we're trying to do here is just push that boundary a little bit to get some more density and some more housing supply in an area where it works. Without building up, you know, eight story building overshadowing a neighborhood. You know, we totally get where those complaints are coming from. They're reasonable. So that's what we're trying to hit to, but if the takeaway is. Pushing away from a student housing design, that's something that we can take to heart.
I also uh in in that site plan, I was curious if there, that's an unusual design. I'm not, you know, I've not. Seen that um overhang parking strategy. Are, is there any local precedent for that or uh? You know, I'm just curious about it, the aesthetic implication of that.
I think there probably are a a fair number of uh structures. Where that happens, you don't see it as much because I've kind of I've done a cut section sort of showing that. I think of a few, you know, small, more student housing oriented places around uh. University where there's an eight or ten unit building that has parking underneath it. Um, I'm actually working on a building on Druid Avenue. That we're going close to construction that has that same configuration, this tuck under parking. So I think it is becoming, it's becoming more normal. Uh, when you get into the densities of this like sort of thirty units an acre, you kind of, you you want to go that way if you want to preserve some green space around the lot.
Justin, did you call it tuck under parking?
Yeah, that's what I refer to it as. Essentially, you sort of pull under the edge of the building uh in your in your car.
Okay, because you see a lot of that in Tidewater and and in the uh the beachy areas where the houses are elevated. Um, so I I was all, Liz, I was also curious about that because I don't see a lot of that uh in this area.
So uh Lambeth Lane has a great example of that uh over near uh that Cap Cavagama uh redevelopment we just. Looked at a couple of months ago. Um, I think it's eighteen eighty-three Lambeth Lane or something. Um, in California, they call them a dingbat.
What?
A dingbat or dingmat.
We've got that in Wartland too. It's fine.
To be clear, there are units in the first floor, so it's not in the whole, this whole building is not parked underneath. There are first floor units and just a small piece is where you park underneath.
Um, so so I would like to chime in on that, on the whole student housing thing. So to be honest, I'm. Surprised that you're even thinking about this as student housing um. All the way out here in a sense, like, obviously geographically, it's not that far, but like. Until unless there's that pedestrian connection underneath the railroad, it is actually like extremely far. Um, so when you say student, do you mean undergrad or do you mean like grad students or that sort of thing? Or are you banking on that pedestrian tunnel happening?
Well, that would be great to see. I I don't know that's going to happen, you know, right away. I mean, I I was undergrad student when I um lived there and I would bike sometimes and I would walk sometimes. And it is a bit of a trip, but that's what I did. So. And I think probably these days, you probably would see more, you know, grad students that were my roommates thinking about were two grad students back in that area. So yeah, I I think that is, it's really a question of, you know, you have these, we're always encouraged to do four bedroom units the way the code. Is written, right? Because a four bedroom unit counts the same as a one bedroom unit density. So. You know, we're happy to provide more kitchens for folks and get away from that kind of, you know, shared space kind of thing. Um, but in ways that the zoning code works against you, but we, I'm not opposed to making that shift. If folks feel that's more appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, I would personally say I'm not um. So like, I I think there's a, there's a fixed amount of students, right? We know how many students there are going to be. They're each going to take up one bed probably. Um. So if there's enough beds near UVA, they'll gravitate towards those and they won't spill out. And an apartment is apartment, an apartment, and it will become a regular housing apartment. Um, and if we don't let there be enough beds near UVA, they'll spill out and take up more space and. They'll either take up existing homes or they'll take up new ones. But I would also say that like. I don't view a four bedroom as necessarily being a student housing uh like situation. Um, because almost every like young renter, uh whether they're, you know, a recent graduate. Um, of college or even of high school and going out in the world and trying to live away from their parents. Is going to find roommates and find like a three or four bedroom and split the cost of it. Um, so that, you know, they're not living with their parents, right? So, you know, I see that as much appealing to people in their like early to mid twenties as it does to. Um, a student and again with that uh caveat that like students are going to gravitate to be as close to UVA as they can, which. This seems relatively far in terms of travel, unless there's a tunnel, in which case it instantly becomes like a prime spot. Um, I'd also say, or I'd ask, uh, so I noticed there's like some new duplexes across the street. Um, that appear to be three stories plus um like a, you know, a. Or attic type situation on top of that. Do we know what the dimensions of those are? Um, I mean, I don't know if anyone here is concerned about massing or if anyone can hear me. It seems very quiet here. Yeah, okay. Um, but massing wise, I don't, I don't seem too worried about this. Five blocks based on what's around it.
Yeah, I'd agree. Um, Judy, you got any thoughts?
Well, yeah. Uh, following up on Roy's comment and and it's the thing that. One of the first things I start to pay attention to um is the massing and the the. Uh, site development uh and its context to the neighborhood. And I have to say that this, um, I think they. Uh, Mr. Schimpf has done a very good job in in breaking up the um. The building into four pieces, uh four units, uh residential type units. Um, that have a cohesiveness to them. Um, and because. They sit in this depression on this uh on uh. The site itself is a depression. I think underneath that kudzu somewhere, there is a depression. Um, that uh it it certainly uh had, it that the site, the height isn't as. Uh, noticeable um as it would be if it was on the top of a hill, say. Um, so I I think it it responds well to the site, to the context. Um, and. Uh, the size of of the buildings of this middle uh missing middle. Um, I I'm I'm. Pleased with that part. Now, this doesn't have anything to do though with uh parking and four bedroom units and all of them would probably have a car. Um, lots of other cars on that street too, I've noticed. Um, the duplexes all seem to have way more than just two cars. Uh, uh, associated with them with four and five. Um, so it looks like a very busy street. Um, and uh, and this doesn't have anything to say about the density uh or the parking or the traffic on the street. I'm just reacting to the the visuals of the building itself.
This is such a strange site because it's either the edge of Fiveville or it's the connection between UVA and Fiveville. And those tell very different stories on transportation, on cars, on traffic, on 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 how many units are appropriate. Um, as without that tunnel. This, you know, I I could see an argument for it, but it's strange because it's at the end of the street. Um, with that tunnel. It may even be too small because then the the comparison is is Bice and a duplex, which, you know, Bice, Big Tower. Um, and it becomes about mediating that difference. Um. Interested to hear your thoughts on uh connections between UVA and Fiveville.
One of the things we have looked at, and I I haven't finished fleshing it out, I'm afraid I'm going to run some trouble, is there is an old right away of Grove Street. Headed back on towards Fiveville essentially. Then in ideal world, if we could tie down, I it goes past our property. But I believe it was terminated at some point between us and the next street where you can then walk us Grove Street, you can then walk down to Ninth Street. And up towards the hospital. So we did, we look originally at that route and we'll still continue to explore that. That certainly would be our. If there could be a a trail that we could contribute to or build that would get folks from us, that direction would be ideal. Um, not sure that's going to be possible with the right ways have shaken out and. There are some utility easements back there we may be able to use. We have to investigate that a little more. But I think really it's going to be folks, you know, biking or going out to the bus if they want to use an alternate transportation route. I think the bus stop is right at the end of this street. If I remember correctly. So there's some other transportation modes there. But we do not have the tunnel, which I agree would be wonderful and is an excellent idea. Um, we don't have as direct pedestrian connections we'd like, but we are still exploring the idea of a connection. Along the edge of the railroad tracks down to uh Grove where it connects in the street. That would get you a pretty decent connection to Fiveville in this location.
Gary, you got anything?
No, I I just agree with the whole uh proximity to transportation and the. Presumption that students are going to be the primary target for this. So.
And Bill, this is in your backyard. So what do you think?
I like to think of Fiveville as that, but you know. We have, uh, yeah, we have Brandon Avenue close by, which, you know, we've been talking about. Um, yeah, a few thoughts, um, more related to the site itself. I think. It's good to see the opening up of that of that rock creek, you know, drainage way. I think. Devils in the details on that in terms of, you know, we've done a lot upstream of there to provide. Storage and quality um improvements to the water that we put into that um watershed through our work at. Like uh Bond House and the new student health and then South Lawn Project a number of years ago. Um, so as you come down, yeah, it's great to see that continued improvement. I think there's a lot you can do with. You know, that stream channel, meander verse plunge pools and stuff that I'm sure Justin's well aware of like. The intricacies of that. Um, so it's not just putting landscape trees in and and stuff and grasses. It's. There's a lot of engineering within the waterway itself. That is beneficial. Um, yeah, I think the density is is fine. It's. I don't know what to say about the the student versus non-student use of this eventual development. Um. I don't know that a whole lot of students live there currently in that in that uh neighborhood. Um, some do. And they probably are looking for a lower cost of housing than they can get elsewhere, unfortunately. But I see, yeah, I mean, I think it's more realistic to think of it as like. For young professionals, like was mentioned, being working at the hospital or or um. Grad students, things like that. Or a small family that might be working at UVA somewhere or elsewhere. I guess the the thing that that did come up that I need to mention is that the tunnel. When we, which is on the city's bike and pedestrian plan is is was noted in the packet for this. So when we took over uh control of Brandon Avenue. Um, and re-in re-redeveloped that, one of the city requests was that we look at and do a study of the feasibility and. Location for a tunnel like that. Um, or not even a tunnel, like I think that it was described as a non. At grade crossing or, you know, whatever that is, like the opposite of an at grade crossing, either over or under. Um, because there's a lot of, as you know, there's a lot of topography distant uh differences along that stretch. So we did that and we, you know, it's in coordination with the city and and they have. Especially we worked with Amanda Poncy really closely on that. So. If Justin, if you haven't talked to her about. That study or the that, it would be probably a good thing to consult with her. But we ultimately um through our, you know, work with that, came up with a recommendation that. Really the best place for that tunnel would be like essentially collect connecting Monroe. To the North Monroe Avenue to the north with Pa- Peyton Street. I don't know, know if I'm saying that right. I think it's Peyton or Patton. Which is a little to the east of where we're looking at at here. Uh, the reason for that is was in the eyes of our consultant that the um. The type of tunnel you build could potentially be a lot cheaper than what you'd have to do at the Valley Road Extended location. It'd be a lot uh shorter potentially tunnel. Um, and. The and and really the the what you're trying to, it connects better with like the health system. And overall to to do it a little to the east, so that would seem like a good benefit. Um, so that I just wanted to to point that out. So whether you're. Yeah, so that's where we we fell on that. Um. And and of course, this would not necessarily be a UVA project, but the tunnel in. We don't have any plans to do that, so just. Get that out there as well. But um, yeah, I mean, it's density wise, I think it's good. Uh, can always obviously use more housing in this in in Charlottesville, so. I guess that wraps up what I would would say.
And I don't, I don't have a lot to add. The only thing that I would add is that um I would not let the tunnel. Factor into my thinking because that tunnel is years away. It's nowhere, nowhere, it has, it's in our vision, it's not in our budget. And getting the right away of the easement from the railroad is going to be a nightmare, um, no matter who does it. There are a number of things that I really like about this. One, I like what you're doing to protect Rock Creek, the the the. At least the concept that you've got to protect Rock Creek. I really like that a lot. And just getting rid of the the invasive in the invasive vegetation would be a big boom for that neighbor that. Haven't seen anything like that in his city in a long time. It's just overrun with cuts in. No problem with the height. I think the way the way the landscape sits, the way the place sits, the the massing is not a problem. The in I just like adding to the city housing supply in this does that and. Hopefully by adding to the housing supply, we then begin to bring down or normalize the the prices elsewhere in the city. The the one thing that gives me a little heartburn, and again, we'll work through this as we iterate and as we. As we talk to the the people who live in the area, is the the very narrow street there. And adding more more traffic in in that area is gonna is gonna be problematic. I went through there around five o'clock. Yesterday, and there were a lot of people walking around their cars going back and forth and. You had to slow down, really, really slow down to be respectful to the pedestrians and all the other cars were coming back and forth because. Is that easy to get two automobiles going both ways in that street? So something you'll need to think about as you move forward, so. Any other thoughts? Rory?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. Earlier, you said you're talking about punching through Grove Street extended to regular grocery. You say there was a right of way or there was not a right of way?
There was a right of way, and it's still, you know, it our property fronts on the residue of it. But as I chased it down to the east, it looks like the city at some point abandoned a piece of it. Which then means I have to go on the railroad parcel, which physically is pop. I had physically walked, you know, from this site down in the direction. But you have to trespass the railroad property. We don't want to be doing that. So not that I didn't do it, you know, when I was in school. But we don't want to be designing for that clearly. So I I I'll. We would like to make that, and I'll keep chasing that down, but my my hunch is I'm going to run into a wall. I can't get around essentially if someone's private. Private property and they may not want to trail back there.
Gotcha. And so is the only option to go through the railroad or potentially talking to the the two or three homeowners between there? To see if they'll let the back of their yards be a trail?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a number of homeowners that I forget how many there are. I see three or maybe five because it goes for the down. It may end as well. But. Yeah, there there's an option to do that. I don't, the. One house is, you know, it's pretty close to the back there. Depending on, you know, who's in there, they may not want to trail. Twenty feet off the back of their house, if that's what I think the property line is. But. Again, it's 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 a possibility, but rely on the folks to want to cooperate. And I don't see it as as likely, but it doesn't mean it can't be attempted at least.
Okay. And then my other question kind of touched on it. Not that I would make any decisions based on this. Is there an informal pedestrian way to get across the railroad tracks? Like before they walled off Brendan, since you live there?
I mean, I used to walk along the tracks down to Shamrock. You can go up the street and on and walk down. Again, I'm not saying recommend that, but I I did it. But when it was a rainy day and I had to get there quick, I would take a little shortcut, yes.
Former Maywood residents and resident in the JPA neighborhood. It has happened many times. It is very much a thing.
But again, that's something we want to encourage. Counselors, Schnook, Amber, Payton, do you have any thoughts?
I have two thoughts. First of all, is that it's not only not to be encouraged, it's also illegal, actually, to be walking on the on the railroad tracks. The the one thought that I had. Was that I was talking with some some folks who own a lot of apartments who cater specifically to. To students, and they are very concerned that the university's expressed desire to house more students on grounds. Is going to put a real damper on their business to the extent that they were likening it to, I think it's. Longwood that did this down in in Farmville. Where they said, basically, we're going to be housing all of our students on grounds. And the apartment people down there basically went belly up because they were they were so. You know, their 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 business model was so much oriented towards students. So the the first thought that I would have is. Without knowing what the future is going to hold, either between now and the time you would build or between. Now now and say five years down the road when the entire economy of 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 student housing may change in Charlottesville. You might not want to get too locked into a particular design. That is going to have to cause you a lot of problems if you decided you wanted to make it more more hospitable towards non-students. That's really my only thought. The other thing I would say about about the the notion of the. The tunnel is that I talked to a number of people who live over in that area. Who say the their big problem right now is that the people who are doing all the construction work at the university park in their neighborhood. And and then hop over the railroad tracks. And if you're going to put a tunnel through there. It's it's not going to be universally welcomed. I will just say that because there are going to be an awful lot of people who are going to suddenly decide. Hey, there's an area there where there's no permit parking. I can park all day, no problem. And all of a sudden, the people who actually live there can't park there. So it there there are some challenges there that we as the city, the planning commission and city council are going to have to address and. No, really, no matter how we go, whether there's going to be a tunnel, whether there's not going to be a tunnel, that's a problem. That I I I say that not to Mr. Shimp, but I say it to the counselors and the plan and the planning commissioners here. That that's a neighborhood that is is really having a lot of pressure from people who work at UVA, whether they're UVA employees, they work there. And find that that's the only place that they can park for free, and it's causing a lot of problems in that neighborhood. That's all I've got.
Yeah, Michael, what do you think?
I don't really have a ton to add that people already haven't said, as others mentioned. At least the idea and concept of preserving of that creek, I think, is a very positive thing of others have said. Definitely curious to see a lot more details specifically. From what I've seen, not too worried about like the height or massing or those issues. Generally, I think, you know, this kind of missing middle is good. And is an interesting way to perhaps get there, although I do understand the concerns about, you know, who will actually be occupying this development. And a question of whether it's meeting the biggest needs. And as you mentioned, I think our zoning code certainly encourages. Development that's not meeting those needs. Other than that, again, don't really have much to add that others haven't said. I guess a final thought I had is is just, you know, I. You know, attended some of the Cherry Avenue Small Area Plan meetings. And, you know, it should be said as well, some of the conversations of whether these would be occupied by students versus young professionals. And I know, you know, in some of those conversations. You know, definitely, I think part of the conversation is not just UVA students, but young professionals moving into neighborhoods. Who are displacing residents in in. You know, being still part of that pattern of people who have lived in the neighborhood for generations or years, not being able to live there anymore. And I just think. In thinking about housing needs, I think UV, you know, there's some of that tension still exists with young professionals. Not just UVA students thinking about their income level, the type of housing they're going to live in, and the type of housing that families. Would need and occupy versus the type of housing someone in their twenties getting ready to make. Fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year or whatever. So anyway, I just I just know that was also part of the conversations in some of those meetings.
Great. Anything else?
Mr. Mitchell, I just have maybe just an additional thought, and perhaps I'm posing this more to commissioners and and. As the as the new voice in the room. Maybe this isn't even a a comment for Justin, but, you know, Justin. I know that I think you're someone who thinks creatively, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the the. Thought that you gave to this site and especially to the protection of Rock Creek or the restoration of Rock Creek. But I guess I'm I'm a little perplexed to the group as to why we aren't. Talking about affordability, like in every single development that comes before us and. And 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 not, it it seems like, I don't think this is what we feel, but it sounds like we're saying. Let's have the development happen and then let the market forces figure out who's going to live there. And I just think that's such a a miss sight if what we are. Saying is there's a housing problem, an affordability problem. And not in this next sentence saying how do we, how do we incentivize developers to help us with that? And and so we have to think creatively, too. Maybe this isn't, you know, the point in which that's the feedback provided, but I would think since Mr. Shemp is asking for. A special youth permit as relates to the density increase, we should be really thinking about how can we meet the charge of adding affordability. I just want to throw that out there. I also wanted. Say that in regards to the street, I think it's important to know that there are, while there are sidewalks on proposed on. The the development proposal, there are no sidewalks on the rest of that street. So, you know, it would be a. Sidewalk to nowhere and maybe maybe we could find out a little bit more about what the what if any long term street improvements are planned in that area.
Guys, if you have a quick comment? That you're you're you're, Commissioner Russell, your description of how the housing is the market works is quite. Accurate, actually, around here in the USB. Normally speaking, housing gets built and then depending on the flow of. UVA students or people new jobs at the hospital or whatever else may be occurring, people kind of come and go into those. As the market decides. And certainly in all of my discussions, maybe it's your first meeting, maybe, but all the discussions. Around other projects I've done, affordability is definitely part of it. And I probably should have come a little more prepared about that. This evening, but I was trying to get past the first question of like how, you know, what size structure works here. And then there is an interesting question of how do you make things work? For the folks who really want to house. And I can tell you, I'd be very, even as someone I I am. Building a few little duplexes in Charlottesville myself and I. Have some other apartments out in Afton where I live, I would be happy to see the university go ahead and house everyone. It would mean a lot of. You know, investor developer class folks would probably lose some money in the immediate future of that. But it would provide a much better housing for the community if that dynamic was changed. So. You know, the the one way we can control things, I'll give you an example. I'm working with Virginia Housing on some projects, and they do financing packages for small developments like this. Where you can get very attractive interest rates for the term guaranteed affordability as part of your project. So even. You don't have to do a hundred unit tax credit deal to get affordable housing project. So I'm not promising I can do that in this particular one. But certainly we do look for those opportunities, but that's really the best way that I've found. To enter into really affordable housing is you have to have help from land trust or Virginia Housing type group. Who can kind of subsidize that difference because the the banks frankly don't. They don't really, they don't care, but they're looking for you to maximize your profit on your project. And so when you're going that route, it's hard to. Get something approved and build it doesn't. And that's just the fault of the system right now, but there are ways around it. We do try to think about those things. And I think I've heard that's an important consideration here. So we will definitely think about how we address that moving forward.
Yeah, I had one just quick thought after that great conversation there. And that's the right of way, the Grove Street Extended Right Of Way that's apparently there. And now that we know Justin. Mentioned that it's kind of cut off on one end. So I'm wondering if there's been thought about how that right away might. Can, you know, might pair up with this project in a in a way that, you know, the city could get something it would would like, maybe. Some more affordability in a way or something. And then. Mr. Shimp could get something that he would like, maybe more units or, you know, something like that. I. Just throw that out there. I mean, I know we have a lot of these paper streets in our in our city and. Some of them are more likely to get used than others. And maybe this is one that bears a little. You know, thinking about.
Yeah, I I think that's a really good point, especially if there's no way to connect it to anywhere. So what's the point of it? But let me push back a little bit on that idea of like Virginia housing loans, because as I understand those. Those tend to be for like eighty percent AMI projects. Where, and I know you know this, Justin, you know, we're looking for affordable affordability at deeper income levels or percent AMI. And it's actually a really good point from Commissioner Russell. Russell, I think we all just think about it implicitly, but. I think we all probably expect you, when this actually comes in as an application, to come in with a concrete proposal with affordability, right?
And finally, just to state the obvious, which everyone already knows, but I think it highlights the fact that. You know, at these deeper affordability levels, zero to thirty percent AMI, probably even zero to fifty, sixty, the market. Is not going to provide it. The free market is not capable of providing and it won't provide it. And the only way we'll ever get there is with partnerships with nonprofits in public subsidy. In in land trust model as well, which is related. But I think that definitely permeates everything and is a challenge, but one that we have to. Rise to and and goes far beyond thinking about just what the market dynamics are, while acknowledging, you know, we still have to. You know, the market is going to be part of the solution as well in terms of greater density and how that plays out, but it's just not going to get us at that that deeper affordability level.
And sometimes I just want to, just wanted to make a sidebar, because that was my, the first comment that we made about this project was the affordability of it. And what were we taking into account of that? And while I'm not saying that we have to always dive deep into the. Zero to ten, twenty, thirty percent, but what I am saying is that as someone who is serious about affordable housing. I want to see housing available to the people who actually serve the community, like our teachers need to be in our neighborhoods. Our firefighters and police officers need to be in the city and not in the outline counties. So sometimes it's not all about. Twenty, thirty percent AMI, but definitely if you're building at eighty percent AM hour, you're telling me about a project that you have already stated. That is geared towards UVA students. I personally do not feel comfortable approving that special use permit.
All right, Justin, you've got you've got a lot of stuff here. Um. Is there anything else you would like to you need or anything else you want to add or?
Just real quickly, just Rory's comment, I, Virginia does have fifty percent. AMI programs. I'm trying to do two of them in Nelson, where I have little properties near my house. So that is out there. I think it's a good program. But to Counselor Pan's point, it is very difficult to get into those lower. I I love to see all housing projects built that way. It's just. The products I'm working on that can't get built if they don't have some component of marketability and profit, because that's what it takes. And that's just the world we live in at the moment. But we will certainly try to do what we can in terms of affordability items. I think, I guess, I did not hear any strong objection. To scale or density. Sounds like I need to focus on, you know, what this is geared towards, who it's serving and how we. Make that the most successful it can be.
The the only the only thing you may be missing is working with the neighborhood density and what the traffic patterns are going to look like. Recognizing that there are no sidewalks in that neighborhood beyond what your development is going to look like. And so just the the traffic. I am certain that you're going to get some feedback from the neighborhood regarding what it's going to do to traffic and safety issues. So be ready for that.
And and I would say four bedroom units.
And, and I would say four-bedroom units, eight of them. All those, if they're set up as normal, as the normal prototype of each bedroom having its own bathroom, that's going to be students or professionals. That's not going to be a family. So the, doing more two-bedrooms, at least there's the opportunity of a family, families getting those units. But if they're all, if, if we, the four bedrooms, they're going to be students, maybe young professionals too. But, and, and I would guarantee all four bedrooms will have somebody in it that has to have a car.
So I got to question that a little bit. I would think that most families would want more than two bedrooms if they have like kids, more than one kid. No?
Yeah, I think the, the bathroom configuration will influence that quite a bit too. You don't want a massive bedroom in every, every room if you want to encourage a family.
Yeah, it depends upon how it's designed inside, but from what I've seen, anything above two-bed, well, even the two-bedrooms, they'll have individual bathrooms.
All right, Justin, I'm going to have to move on. Any thing you want to wrap up with or any questions you want to leave us with, thoughts?
I don't know. I think I've got some good guidance moving forward and we will adjust our plan accordingly and send it back in for the public hearing process. Thank you all for your time.
All right. Thank you very much. Why don't we take five minutes before we move into the company? So five minutes, not 10, five. Hello, Jennifer. Good to see you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you all as well.
Yeah. Mr. Akabuna, are you going to, is it going to pre- preamble or are we just jumping right in? Or Missy is it preamble?
Let me unmute. Thank you. Um, no, I mean, I'll go ahead and open it up and we'll, we'll hand it over for the evening. We, we have another opportunity to talk with our consultants from our Charlottesville Plans Together project. A lot of exciting things that are going on and we've had lots of discussions working with the consultant on our end. And we, we've got definitely a number of steps that are, that are coming up. And you guys will see kind of how the schedule is moving along as part of this discussion as well. But I must say we're, we're getting into high speed on this. So we definitely, you know, want folks to be as engaged as you can be. There'll be some opportunity for gaining feedback and all of this is going to continue to be building over the next couple of months. So hopefully that segue is good. I think I'm turning it over to Jenny Koch and her team for the evening. Mr. Rice will be providing advancing of slides as part of the project as we go this evening. And we're looking forward to, to hearing from you guys concerning where we are with the project.
Missy, and thanks for, to all of you for taking time to meet with us tonight. You know, I want to say welcome to Commissioner Russell, looking forward to working with you on this effort as well. I'm going to try to keep us moving forward in this discussion. We're aiming for nine o'clock at the very latest. But I, I trust that you'll slow me down if there's something you want to get into in more detail. If I'm trying to speak through it. There are a few others from the team on the line tonight. You'll hear mostly from me, Jenny Koch with RHI, and then Latoya Thomas from Brick and Story towards the end of the presentation. But Dina Roadside from RHI, Sarah Kirk from HRNA, and Lee Einzweiler from Code Studio are also on the line tonight. So thanks everyone for joining. But with that, we can go to the first, the next slide, please. Thank you. So on the agenda that we included in the meeting packet, we included links to meeting materials and engagement summaries that we might sort of reference throughout our discussion today. Some of them are really lengthy. We, you know, as we said, we don't expect that you all sat down and looked through all of these, but they're there for you to look through if you're interested in that. We also include throughout the presentation, several references to where people can find the slides for tonight, because we want to make sure everyone knows where to find them. They're on our website. And I just wanted to mention, I caught the discussion, the pre-meeting about how we're hosting a lot of information on websites off of the city's page and how we're going to handle that after this project is done. And so that's something I just wanted to note that I'll be working with the city to make sure that we can transfer everything from our page and our YouTube and all those other things to the city once the project is finished. So with that, please go to the next slide. We don't need to talk through this in full, but the key items we want to discuss with you are going through some project updates and draft schedule updates, as Missy just mentioned. And then we want to get into some proposed sort of guiding principle themes for the plan. And then for the comprehensive plan, excuse me, and then some proposed initial revisions to the vision statements that lead off each of the chapters of the plan. So, you know, we, we're not trying to exhaust you with this, as I mentioned, but we know many of you were really involved in those discussions in 2017, 2018. And we started with those drafts where they're available. And so we wanted to make sure that we're walking through these updates with you so you can flag anything for us, you know, that may have been discussed previously. We want, we want to make sure we didn't cut out anything. That was a big focus of a discussion in the last round. So with that, we can go to project updates on the next slide.
Jennifer, do you want us to interrupt you when we have questions or you want us to go to the end?
Sure, go ahead.
So I just want to know how you want to do this.
Oh, yeah.
Don't wait till the end, interrupt you as we have missions.
Yes, please. Sorry, thank you for that. So just a few things to note in terms of what's happened since we last met with you on August 11th. So when we met in August, we walked through some draft findings from our May and June engagement activities. And since then, we finalized the engagement summary and sent out a notice to our email list and others about that. So that's on the website, both in summary form and the survey data are posted. We've also been since that time, working on refining draft housing recommendations and potential comprehensive plan revisions in anticipation of the next community input checkpoint. And we'll be discussing all of that in more detail tonight. Lastly, we've held, as you, as you heard from some of the commissioners, we held two steering committee discussions on August 24th. Our meeting focused on initial discussions around potential comprehensive plan revisions, again, much of which we'll be discussing later tonight. And then on September 10th, we had a work session where we used Zoom breakout rooms and broke down the draft housing recommendations in small groups with the steering committee. And so their input from that meeting has been taken forward. We're incorporating that into the draft housing plan and we're just undergoing some staff review of that right now. And as Missy said, that I'll be ready to go out for public comments in the coming weeks. And we look forward to your comments at that point. If you have the next slide, the other thing we wanted to mention tonight was some proposed updates to the schedule. So as you might recall, during the first community input stage, you know, we, it was meant to kick off earlier than it did and then we had to delay it due to COVID. We ended up also extending that original community input point even from that delayed point, because it was, you know, finding it was more difficult to reach people as expected during that timeframe. Due to the pandemic, we extended it out a bit. So all of that has sort of pushed things back a bit. And then recognizing that the amount of data we received in that first community input point meant it was great. It's certainly not a problem to receive a lot of information. You know, we got a lot of survey responses, a lot of discussions were had, but we wanted to take time to really look at all of that. And so all of that led to a bit of a delay in sort of analyzing those early stages of what are some of the priorities that are coming out when we're talking with people about affordability and equity. And so what we've done is the schedule that you're looking at reflects sort of a one-month shift in the final draft of the comprehensive plan. There's also some sort of small tweaks within each of those bars, but largely it's, we're sort of looking at the endpoint there. One of the other adjustments we made was in those key community input points at the bottom. This proposed schedule combines what we were showing as the second and third community checkpoint and, you know, pushes back that combined second period a month as, you know, according with those delays we just mentioned. So this, you know, this, that's sort of that bubble that's shown on the screen now in terms of community checkpoint is what we're going to be talking about coming up in the next month. So we just want, we want to get your input on this overall schedule, recognizing that this is a very ambitious schedule, even accounting for the delay there, recognizing, you know, that there's a lot to be done. In any case, in a normal year, in a standard year, and it's just things take a bit longer in our current situation. So this schedule, I would say, sort of assumes that review of the draft housing plan in October and November leads to some really clear community input, community sort of base conclusions about the direction for some of the significant land use changes. So when we get to that land use piece in early, early 2021, those discussions go fairly smoothly. So what we're proposing is that we would move forward with this or something that we tweak based on your input tonight. And then after the next community checkpoint, we have a check-in and say, okay, how did we, how did that go? How does it look? You know, what's the community sentiments around some of these proposed revisions or some of these proposed housing recommendations? And then we revisit the schedule again by the end of the year.
Oh, the zoning update will be done by the beginning of March or end of February.
So the zoning update, there would be a section when we are finalizing, once we've gotten some final input on the housing piece, the zoning team will start what they've called a sort of diagnostic report of, you know, recognizing here's what's in the housing plan. This is what we'll need to change in the zoning. Sort of laying out what their process will be for what they'll be looking at as far as zoning, but they will not really dig into the text, starting to draft text, starting to draft the map until we've got that, the comprehensive plan, the final.
What is, what is the actual deliverable that we're going to get in the middle to end of February? Where you talk about prepare for zoning update. What, what deliverable are we getting?
Sure. Lee, would you like to speak to that?
I'm, I'm happy to. The principal thing that we promised contractually at least is that we would prepare guidance by looking at what is proposed and determining whether your existing code can produce that. And if it can't, then what needs to change in the existing code in order to be able to produce it? And what are the steps that we would take to get there? So it is a, it is a diagnostic of, of not just sort of fluffy best practices, but really just looking directly at, you said you wanted this. In order to get to that, we need these changes, these kinds of changes in the code. And then we would begin in on drafting those changes. So it's, it's just a way to kind of check in one more time. Did you really mean it? Because by the time it gets into the zoning, you know, you better really mean it.
So by the end of February, we will have gotten to the diagnostic phase. We'll understand what we got to do. And then beginning March, then you start doing the actual work to fix the zoning problems you've got. Cool. Yeah.
That's accurate.
I have an objection. If we want to be very clear as part of the RFP process, that this is not a zoning update. We don't love our zoning and want to slightly change it slightly. We hate our zoning and we want to replace it entirely. Can you do that instead, based on the RFP?
Are they, so they're attempting to do in the diagnostic phase?
Yeah, I see adoption of zoning update on there.
It, it, it is anticipated to be a replacement. The extent of the replacement will be determined in that diagnostic process because it will recommend the path forward. It could be that there are certain districts today that actually remain functional. Maybe the development standards are inappropriate in those districts and we change those, but there may be some fundamentals which are, continue to be acceptable moving forward. But we'll be looking at every line of text and trying to figure out whether it's worth keeping in the new system or not.
I'm concerned about that use of your time. It would be helpful to not say zoning update on the slide if you don't mean it. It's very confusing.
I'm happy with calling it new zoning, all you want.
Thank you.
I'll make that update on the schedule. Thank you.
It's easy for things to slip.
Yeah, I think, I think the appropriate word is rewrite.
Thank you.
I think you're right, Alex. I mean, you missed that. Yeah. I think you're right, Alex. I mean, you missed that. Yeah, rewrite, zoning rewrite.
We'll make sure that's consistent.
Thanks, thanks. Please.
All right. So if we go to the, the next slide, we want to give some brief updates about the affordable housing plan. We know there's a lot of interest in seeing that. So if you go to the next slide, as I said, Sarah is on the line. She can answer any questions that you might have at this point. But first I just want to walk through a few updates and, and next steps for this. So we've got a draft plan that is incorporating input from the steering committee, review of recommendations at our work session and is now going through staff review. We're not planning to discuss the, the plan and recommendations in detail today. But like I said, it'll be coming out for a full review in the coming weeks. And then we'll be meeting with you and with council to discuss that plan in, in November, November 10th, I believe. So we wanted to, you know, let you know that today, make sure that's sort of in your mind as the next step. And then I wanted to just note as far as, you know, making sure it's clear how we're thinking about the affordable housing plan being connected to the comprehensive plan, including the future land use map. And then the next steps for the zoning rewrite. So while the affordable housing plan document, as you'll see in the coming weeks, does not cover the full breadth of topics covered in the housing chapter, it, it covers a lot of it. But we want to just note how those goals and recommendations in that plan are going to be incorporated into the comprehensive plan. So one thing is there's sort of a vision for affordable housing that's stated in the plan. And we've used that in revising the vision statement for the housing chapter of the comprehensive plan. So you'll see that in a bit tonight. There's also several recommendations in the housing, affordable housing plan that will be incorporated into the housing chapter of the comprehensive plan as, as goals and strategies as they fit in. There's also for each of those recommendations in the affordable housing plan, there's a time, a timeframe and action steps for those actions. And so those will be utilized in the implementation chapter of the comprehensive plan. And that also includes steps for our team as we go move forward for the comprehensive plan or for the zoning rewrite. So you'll be able to see in the affordable housing plan, some explicit notes on how we'll be incorporating the housing plan into the comprehensive plan. And then importantly, you know, for this group, when it comes to the future land use map, the affordable housing recommendations related to land use contain some specific guidelines around how different strategies or tools related to land use in zoning, for example, how those might be sort of geographically focused or, or sort of targeted in areas around the city based on certain criteria or guidelines. But the affordable housing plan does not contain specific maps that show those areas. Doesn't get into that level of detail because after we've had a discussion with the community about the housing plan and these guidelines and these priorities in the plan, we want to take that input and translate that into the future land use map. We didn't want to have that map at this point. We want to talk more about sort of high level thinking about where we should be, how we should be prioritizing those changes.
But I'm sorry, when I read the draft recommendations, which I took as the draft, the affordable housing plan, it looked like there were some maps in there. Are those going to be struck or are those just for discussion?
So if you were, if you looked through the steering committee work session materials, you're right, there were some maps in there. And we added a note to that, that they were just for discussion, because we wanted to sort of illustrate at that point what, what it means, for example, if you're trying to focus on transit corridors, which was one of the things that was mentioned. So the incident, the housing, the affordable housing plan, that's where the final draft that ties all the recommendations together does not include those maps.
Okay, great.
Any other questions about this, this plan at this point? Okay. Well, we look forward to having that discussion with, with you all in the council as we move forward into November. If you go to the next slide, then we'll move on to what is the largest chunk of our agenda tonight, which is talking about some initial revisions to the comprehensive plan, proposed revisions to the draft plan. So if you go to the next slide, tonight, we're in this section, we're going to walk you through, through some of our initial ideas related to updating the comprehensive plans, sort of high level vision statements and some guiding principles for the plan. As I mentioned, we know people are really eager to look at the housing plan, the affordable housing plan and the future land use map. But we think it's really important that we establish some of these organizing principles first before we start to get into that completely. And that was something that was sort of reflected when we talked with community members. There was, you know, wanting to see a specific sort of vision in place before we, you know, look at the land use, for example. So as we go through the discussion today, you know, obviously happy to get your thoughts today, but I want to note, we're happy to have any additional input. If you, if you want to provide it throughout, you know, the next week or so, we know you do not have a ton of time to look through all of this and we don't expect that you can react immediately to everything. So if you go to the next slide, so I'm assuming most of all of you are very familiar with the structure of the comprehensive plan, but just to sort of center us all on what we're talking about here. And for anyone who's joining us who might not be as familiar, this is the basic structure for the existing 2013 comprehensive plan. So we'll be narrowing it down to two topics for tonight. But all these pieces will be thought about as we move forward in this whole process. So if you go to the next slide, what we're talking about tonight is the community values section and the topic specific chapters, which is sort of what we're calling those different chapters of the comprehensive plan that have the titles you see in the, the bubble here on the screen. So if you go to the next slide, we're starting with community values. So on the next slide, we, you want to discover sort of what role those play in the plan right now. So in the current 2013 plan, there are a set of community values that come at the beginning of the document and they sort of sets a stage for the rest of the document. You can see on the left or on the right here, excuse me, the sort of brief statements. There's more details after those statements in the plan. But for the purposes of the 2013 plan, these values were the city council 2025 vision statements. So one thing is we know the city council is undergoing an update to their strategic plan right now. And we assume they'll have potentially some updates to these coming in, in the coming months. We also know that for each sort of plan process that's happened previously, there's been different ways that sort of guiding principles have come out for the comprehensive plan, sometimes in partnership with, with the county, for example. Some, or excuse me, with, with the council, sometimes, sometimes separately from, from council. But one thing we wanted to think about as we're thinking about potential revisions to the comprehensive plan is we think there's a way to use these initial statements at the beginning of the plan to really tie together some connections between goals and strategies in the rest of the document. You know, clear connections can be made if you dig into the plan between different strategies. But one of the things we heard in our community engagement process was that people recognize the connections between a lot of topics in the comprehensive plan and they want to see that reflected directly in the document. So if you go to the next slide, please. So to recognize this sort of desire to see interconnectivity between sections of the plan, we're proposing creating a set of guiding principles that are specific to the comprehensive plan. There would be a set of overarching priority areas for the plan. They could clarify different connections between topics and goals. The example we used with the steering committee when we talked about this was the Minneapolis comprehensive plan has a structure where they, they have a set of priorities upfront and they tie all strategies to, to those priorities. So if you're interested, you, you might want to take a look at that example. You know, I think there was interest from the steering committee in this thought, even having some sort of table upfront that sort of lists the, the community guiding principles for the comprehensive plan. And then says, you know, which strategies tick the box for each of them, you know, really showing those connections explicitly. So we've done some initial thinking about what the themes might be for these guiding principles. We tried to make sure they were all sort of overarching, that they didn't focus on any one topic. Oh, thank you, Lyle, for connecting to that in the chat. That they didn't connect to just one specific chapter, topic area, but that they were all sort of cross cutting phrases, for example. So if you go to the next slide, please. We've got here the 2013 community values on the left and then our initial draft proposed sort of themes for guiding principles on the right. So in a final document, these would be, I think, the structure that was laid out for the community values in the past was useful in terms of having sort of a short phrase and then a longer, a slightly longer explanation for what that really means, right? Because if you look at these, it's not immediately clear maybe what some of these mean. So we've included them sort of, sort of streamlined here for our discussion, but they'll have given, be given more context as they become refined. I'm happy to talk through what we're thinking with some of these, but I want to stop and just get any initial thoughts about this whole idea of guiding principles or if you have thoughts about them themselves.
Let me, I mean, I don't think we lost it. I think it may be in resilience and it may be in balance and sustainability. But I do want to be certain we haven't lost the environmental concerns. And I guess they're in either resilience or balance and sustainability.
Yeah, I think it comes out a bit in, in both of those. And even kind of could come out in connections between different, you know, green areas, for example, different open spaces. But yeah, I think the way we're thinking about it is resilience would really focus on sort of the capacity to change and innovate in the face of, you know, issues that, that come up, for example, our, our current situation. So that'd be sort of resilience. And then balance and sustainability, we're thinking of sort of that traditional, you know, if you think of the sustainability legs, sort of balancing the different pieces that you need to, to keep things running. So balancing, you know, environment, economy, equity, social equity, all those pieces, sort of making sure that those are considered as you move forward on any action.
The way I'm reading this seems to me that with the way we are looking at actual trade offs, where there could be environmental trade offs for economic development here. And we're, we're willing to make the, and the way reading this suggests that we're willing to make those trade offs to get greater economic development.
I think the way that I was thinking about it is that we're saying, talking about balance is that I think just making sure that those are being weighed, that any sort of action, you're taking a look at how it might be impacting other, these other areas in the plan as you move forward. And that it's considered in the process, because I think often in decisions are made and we're not necessarily thinking about how does this impact, you know, racial equity or how does this impact access to opportunity or, or jobs, for example. So.
I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily think the, um, the old school focus on green city is the right way to, to word that. I think that's yesterday, but I still think that there's value in having some emphasis on the environment that's more clearly articulated. And it looks like it's taking a backseat based on what I see in these guiding principles.
Yeah, that's certainly not our intention. So we could work to make that more clear. I, I want to make sure that's really clear.
I mean, I'm, I'm not the only, Lyle, what do you think? I mean.
Yeah, I've been thinking about that too, because that wasn't clear, immediately clear to me from what I'm seeing. And I, I'm thinking, really thinking about health and how that connects to people. I think that, that's something, talking about sort of health and, you know, like a healthy lifestyles, healthy opportunities, something, something like that.
Yeah. And I'm not, not just thinking about health, I'm thinking about tomorrow and what we do today, how what we do today affects, you know, my great grandkids, the world that my great grandkids are going to live in, in the environment that they inherit.
Long term.
Jennifer, is the idea that each one of these bullets that your proposed themes, are each one of the words in your proposed themes would then have additional bullets under them with, with more specific, you know, green best practices, that kind of thing, or?
Yes, yes. I think they would have at least a few sentences. We don't want to, you know, a huge page for each of them, but having a few sentences to clarify what we mean is certainly the intention there.
I do like the fact that you've reduced the number of bullets. I think that's very good.
So for me, I'm sorry.
I just don't want the, and again, whatever the latest buzzword is, and it may be caught up in balance or resilience. I just don't want the focus on our waters, our streams, reduced cargo, reduced carbon footprint to get, get lost. I focused to make those things happen. I don't want to see they get lost in this.
Sure, understood.
Okay, I'm sorry. I interrupted someone. Who was it?
No worries. What I was going to say was, is that definitely it's been streamlined, but I'm having a little take back because I feel like just looking at the proposed themes or for guiding principles, I know it, it may seem like it's in layman's terms, but I don't get anything from that. I feel like when I look on the left, I understand completely exactly what those values, values or themes are. I have no clue, even though you've taken out some of the words and the bullets. To me, it's just, it's very distinct on the left. It is very wide open for interpretation on the right. And then I guess that's when who, I think Mr. Heaton asked, were you going to do sub bullet points? I just don't want the meat and potatoes to get lost in the visual.
Yeah.
I, I absolutely agree with, with you. I think it's like, it's saying everything and then losing, losing something in that. But if the idea is that each of the topics tie into these guiding principles, then I understand that a little better. How each, each individual chapter could speak to equity, resilience, balance, you know, all these things. But so it's a little one million yards high right now, it seems.
I might also say that a comprehensive plan is a, is a planner's document. And the words that you're using are more like a, a promotional brochure about Charlottesville. And so, and I get that because that's how you, how you get down to the, but yeah, I, I think if we're looking at it as a, as a planning document, it can be more specific. If we're thinking, or excuse me, vague and then get specific. But if we're also realizing that the public is going to read this and they may not recognize the city we're describing.
Well, I just feel like, um, like we're in it and I know we've been in it for a while. And if I've been in it, and I'm not saying I'm the brightest apple in the bunch, but I don't think I'm the dullest and I'm having a hard time visualizing, think about somebody who knows nothing about planning, who may be seeing something like this for the first time. To me, it would be a turnoff because I feel like if I have to put too much effort into something, one, two, three, four, five, six or seven bullet points, I'm not going to want to be, I'm not going to be intrigued to want to know more for it to be effective because I'm already at a roadblock because I'm at a roadblock a little bit and I know what's going on.
But that's my question is, as planning commissioners, are we not, are, are we really trying to help create a document that guides the policy and the zoning of the staff and the professional planners more than we're trying to create a PR piece?
Well, I don't think we should be creating a PR piece, but I do think it should definitely be where not only planners and staff and city council can understand it, but that our citizens know exactly what's going on. Because to me, that's where the, the questions and the discrepancies coming now. The, the public can't understand the jargon. So I appreciate them for trying to make it more public accessible. It's just that I just feel like if you're looking at that left column and then you're comparing it to the right, yes, those words are, you're able to understand, but I'm not able to easily equivocably put those other bullet points to the new ones. Is all I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I completely agree. I, I think whether it's for the implementers or for the public reading it for the first time, either way, you benefit from having clarity and like accurate summaries of the things. Otherwise, you're just diving into whatever the details or the bullet points are anyway. And I think like, not to pile on too much on the same thing, but like the balance and sustainability in particular, like the balance, to me, you know, anytime you have guiding principles, you're, you're balancing between them. So it seems a little bit odd to specifically hedge with that one, you know, specifically the environment. I guess I don't really know or understand why that would be. And in particular, leading with it and resilience, to be honest, I have pretty much no idea what that means. And then the other thing is on the left, we have smart citizen focused government, which is something I think we are quite bad at right now. And maybe this is more of a strategic plan thing. I mean, sorry guys, but we all started this meeting talking about how we couldn't find any of the PDFs of the things we reviewed six months ago. I mean, sorry guys, but we all started this meeting talking about how we couldn't find any of the PDFs of the things we reviewed six months ago. But like.
Okay, I'm back.
So I don't know if that needs to be a theme, or if it needs to get into the plan, or if it should be in the strategic plan instead, but yeah, I'd love to not lose that entirely.
Like Rory, that, that right there hits, directly hits the nail on the head to my point of we need smart citizen focused government. And I do feel like we are not perfect, but we are moving the needle to try to get to that. But it is no way I would pick that up out of these proposed draft things or guiding principles.
Alright, so I guess when I'm here, I totally, I, I understand, I think what you are saying and I, I agree. I think we need to add, especially if we're talking about in the next phase of community engagement, we need to have some more context with these. We don't just want to give statements. And we also just need to maybe give some more consideration to the phrasing we're using for these. I, I hear you there. And making sure that we don't, we don't want to lose these sort of points of emphasis. But I think some of it comes out of, you know, we didn't want to necessarily have some of these be a focus because they come out in the topics for the vision statements. But I hear you and we'll try to address these comments.
Yeah, we're totally proud of the work you've done, but yeah, I think it wraps a little privilege around that. It's helping us understand what, what all that means. It would be a great value.
Maybe an obvious point, an image would help.
There you go.
May I make a comment?
Please.
Jenny, it's actually a question. The guiding principles, I'm, I'm curious about their genesis. Do, do these come from just the consultants' experience with all cities? Or are they tailored towards what the consultants have found out about Charlottesville?
I mean, I mean, I think a little bit of both, bringing our experience from other places, but all of these came out as things that are important in the conversations we had earlier this year. I would say, so we, we use, we started with, with that, sort of looking at what we heard and went from there. I mean, I, I think when we give more context to it and the statements are longer, we can try to be more specific or make sure there's a more maybe direct focus to them.
Well, yeah, just tying it to Charlottesville, letting it know that this is not a stock document that can be applied to any city and but that it is tailored towards the needs of Charlottesville. And what the consultants have found out about Charlottesville and those needs. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess what I'm hearing is, I, I haven't heard any sort of pushback against this idea of having some guiding principles that we can tie to different sections of the document. So I will assume unless anyone says so now that we're, we should continue with that idea.
I do like that part.
Definitely, I know we've kind of been like tearing it apart, but I, I'm a firm believer, if I can chastise you, I can praise you. I like the guiding principles. I just want to make sure that everyone can understand those principles.
Understood, thank you. Great. So with that, I'd like to go to the next slide. Thank you for that discussion. So at this point, I will switch to talking about those topic specific chapters. So if you go to the next slide. So again, looking at the bubbles on, on the right here, this is what we're referring to as the, the topic specific chapters. They're really the, the meat of the comprehensive plan. We've highlighted two in green, just to note that those were not updated, they were not drafts from 2018 that we reviewed in terms of the, having gone through the whole review process with you all, the text of them anyway, we've got the land use map. But the community engagement chapter is, is, will be a new chapter as well. So we just wanted to point those out before we can get into the discussion there. But in general, just to sort of remind us of our charge, our charge was to start from the 2018 drafts or where they're available and, you know, really give some focus on equity and affordability and have discussions that were with the community and see how we can make sure that's incorporated into these documents. So I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, but one thing we really want to make sure of today as we're talking with you is that we didn't change the intent of statements where they had gone through a really rigorous process or sort of removed any key elements that came out of that 2017, 2018 process. So, you know, those of you who are there, please don't hesitate to flag those pieces for us. Next slide, please. So just a few notes before we get into the details there. These vision statements for each of these topics, you know, really set the stage for each of the chapters, which again are those in the bubble on, on the previous slide. So as we've tried to show on this graphic, on this slide, the vision in each chapter leads to specific goals related to that vision. And then within each goal under that vision, there's several strategies for achieving the goal. So sort of a layered structure within each of the chapters. Within this, there's were three different updates we're going to be looking at through all this process and two of them we're going to talk about today. We've already talked about the sort of chapter vision statements, but with, or excuse me, the community value statements, but within this topic specific vision statements, these two we'll talk about today. So one type of revision we're looking at is looking at the chapter names, those sort of boxes that were in the previous bubble to make sure that they are clear themselves about what's actually in the plan. Or if there's ways that we can tweak those for clarity, we proposed some today. So that's sort of one step above the vision statement. But looking at the, the vision statements themselves is the most significant edit we're going to talk about today. You know, we've reviewed them for content related to sort of equity, affordability, things that have come out in the discussions we've been having with the community and with our steering committee. And also just trying to sort of review them for focus and clarity, I would say. I think there's a lot of really good information in those statements and within the chapters, you know, the goals and strategies that follow. But we tried to sort of center them and focus them in certain areas. And so it'll be good to hear your thoughts on those. The third piece that we're not going to talk about tonight, but will be a future discussion is the goals and strategies that come after the vision. And so those will be updated the next phase along with the land use map, where we really start to look at the details of how we get some of these visions achieved. If you go to the next slide, please. So again, just the list of the chapters we'll be going through, I just wanted to take a second and point out one specific change that we wanted to talk with you about. Would, which would be looking at the land use chapter and the historic preservation and urban design chapter, and potentially taking the urban design piece out of that urban preservation, excuse me, historic preservation and urban design chapter, and putting that in with the land use chapter. And the reason we're suggesting that is because it will help to streamline some of the recommendations that we'll be using for the zoning rewrite, for example. You know, land use and urban design will be, can be tied together more closely if they're in the same chapter. And there's a lot of overlap that I think will come out in those future phases. You know, I think we, we talked with Steph about this and we, we certainly understand why there was some, there's connections between staffing on, in these areas. And that's sort of part of the reason why they're connected. So there, you know, we'd love to hear your thoughts about that. But I would also say, you know, at this point, I know for time we're doing okay. So I'm fine walking through all of these. If, if you all are up for it, but if, if, if you'd rather focus on certain areas, you know, I know we want to get through at least the first four. So it might just be okay to go through all of them. But I guess any thoughts on this idea of sort of restructuring the land use and historic preservation and urban design chapters?
I think it would be really, really helpful if we could hear from Jody.
Well, would the land use title of the land use chapter change to land use and urban design?
Yes.
So it would, you'd be able to find the urban design. I, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bothered by the implication that historic preservation doesn't have to do anything with urban design or separating it. And, and losing that connection. Because I feel like historic preservation is more than the preservation of individual buildings, that there is a, an essential, critical component that has to do with the context of historic districts and, and their urban characteristics. So I'm, I'd, I'd like to, to think about this more and maybe look back at the, at that chapter and see what the specifics would be, or the, the specific impacts would be in separating those two.
Sure, understood. And I.
Liz, this is, Liz, this is also in your wheelhouse. Do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I echo those statements. It makes me wonder. And there's, I have specific comments on the historic preservation slide that I think we're losing something in what it is that historic preservation can do in regards to, or urban design and in regards to land use. And if it becomes too small of a chapter, it's losing some of its importance. It almost makes me wonder why wouldn't then.
It seems to me when we went through it that we, you know, I think there are elements of the historic preservation chapter that could still include design. I think our concern was having it split out from, having urban design split out from land use. You might look at the land use chapter and wonder why there's not more about form in there or some, some elements of urban design. And then maybe it's more difficult to find that connection in that if you're looking and it's in the historic preservation or urban design chapter. So there might be a way to include some like land use and urban form and have some elements of that in that chapter and keep some of the design pieces in historic preservation. You know, we're certainly open to discussion on that.
The devil is in the details, so open to the possibility, like to see the details.
Well, maybe, I, I know Liz, you said you had some comments on historic preservation vision. So maybe some of this will come out as we're talking about these different vision statements. So if we go to the next slide, we just had some thoughts. Well, I think, you know, what's coming now, what we're going to talk about. We, I just want to give some context to where our revisions came from. So they incorporate input from the August 24 steering committee meeting. We sort of went through, showed the current vision statements, then had a brainstorm about what folks thought, what they would like to see included in the vision statements. It also incorporates all the sort of input that we got in May and June in those engagement processes. So we're not, you know, we don't need to go through tonight and talk about specific words, you know, wording and whatnot, but we would love to get your feedback on, you know, content and meaning. And you know, if there's unclear words, like we talked about with the community values, guiding principles, certainly a part of this discussion as well. And then happy to gather detailed feedback as needed following this discussion.
Jennifer, I'm sorry, I had one quick question on the slide previous to this. It was about one of the, thank you, that the, it says urban environmental sustainability. Is there a reason why we're using urban instead of just plain environmental sustainability?
Um, well, that was the title of the draft chapter. So I, I don't know if someone else wants to speak to that from the last process, but we are actually proposing a change to that title.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So if you go to the next slide, please, we'll start with land use. And so as we mentioned, there was not a new draft of the text, the chapter in, from 2018. So what we started with was the 2013 statement, which is shown on the left. And then on the right, you can see our initial thoughts about revisions in bold. And all of these are, most of them anyway, are some key statements we want to pull out, but obviously we're happy to have your review of, of all of this. Would it be useful for you all if I, if I read these or would you like to take some time to read them?
Sounds to me like we're reading them.
It does sound like that. I'm just gonna let, I'm just gonna run with that.
I'm glad the human activities went away. I didn't really understand that sentence.
That was part of what we were looking at in these revisions was wording. And you know, obviously we've all gone through this where we, we think about the wording a lot and we adjusted. And I think there are certainly probably reasons why certain words or phrases were used, but our intent was to try to clarify that and we might not have done so. And that'll be good for you to point out in us in the revised statements as well. Any thoughts, not to interrupt anyone who's still reading, but any thoughts on this current draft that we've got on here?
Well, two quick thoughts. Move to strike, section two, starting and density in appropriate areas. We never do anything in appropriate areas. Second, unique neighborhood characteristics sort of be celebrated. I'd like something specifically about there about diversity. We have neighborhood diversity and that's worth celebrating. Right off the top.
You mean, is there a specifics or like, no, diversity in design within neighborhoods and uses or with people in neighborhoods?
Yes.
And all of it, okay. Just making sure there was not a specific.
And I'm, I'm going to state the obvious in the, the racial and economic inequities. I'm assuming that that is what we're referring to as the community values from the previous, the 2013. We're just spelling out what those community values are, right?
Um, that was not a direct, like one-to-one replacement of that sentence from 2013, but we were trying to sort of enunciate what we heard from the community. So I guess in a way, we are trying to say what we thought the community was saying to us about what, what they want to see in that future land use vision. But our intent was not necessarily to replace community values from the 2013 statement with that sentence.
So I like it as a whole. I'd like to hone in on the support provision and use of expanded transportation options clause. I feel like it's, well, I don't know what provision means really, but also expanded transportation option seems vague. Maybe we should say, or I mean, depending on what we mean by it, but I think we mean something like, you know, sustainable and efficient transportation options. Or as explicit as non-automobile.
I, I think we want mode shift. We don't want people to have choices. We want to see better results.
I think some of that comes out in the, the sort of idea of mode shift and, and transportation options comes out on the chapter, the transportation chapter too. But obvious, there's obvious connections to land use and we talked about that with those overarching values. And that should come out in this statement as well. So we can, we can take a look at that.
On the right, the bold last sentence, the word considered seems to have, to me, has very little teeth to it. I'd love to see that replaced with preserved. Neighborhood characteristics are to be celebrated and preserved as communities integrate new buildings, development and uses.
Yeah, or retained is another.
Yeah, how do you preserve something when you're developing new things?
Yeah, I might even go with enhanced, right? Like we can.
I just don't want it to be considered and then disregarded.
Yeah, it, it, there isn't just development and then just preservation. They, you know, they, they're because we're seeing them as two different things. So therefore this, this sentence to me says we should respect the, and be sensitive to the historic characteristics of certain neighborhoods.
The only caution, the only caution that I would offer is how the word preservation and NIMBY relate to one another.
Preservation?
And then not in my backyard.
Oh, well, you're, I don't mean preservation in terms of historic preservation. I'm meaning it in terms of preserving the character, preserving the neighborhood unique neighborhood characteristics.
You mean, you mean aesthetic?
But I, I do, I do. The preservation of characteristics lends to the resistance, resistance to increased density, for example.
And also.
I was gonna say too.
About aesthetic, you're talking about aesthetics, not necessarily past values or inequities.
Well, then explain to me what unique neighborhood characteristics are.
Well, my question before we even explain that, and Jody, I'm kind of with you. But here's where I have that heartburn about that is because if, if in our comprehensive plan, we always talk about preserving Charlottesville's character and, you know, those things that make us special to Charlottesville, but then prime example, we have developments that we approve that do not necessarily preserve the character of the neighborhood. It is constantly changing. So at this point, it's almost like, do we need to redefine with the character of Charlottesville? It is constantly changing. So at this point, it's almost like, do we need to redefine what the character of Charlottesville is? Because I personally don't feel like a lot of the decisions that we've made here lately have preserved the character. Of what I perceive Charlottesville to be. Now, part of that could be that we need to get away from some of that character. Because it does seem like that if we hold on to all of it, we're definitely not moving forward when we're talking about racial and economic inequalities and segregation. But I think this is just a hard wording because as a planning commissioner, we literally just had. Someone come in front of us where his proposal looks nothing like what's already in the neighborhood. So when we say we're preserving character and we want to preserve certain neighborhoods, it can't only be in the historic districts. It has to be throughout the whole city.
Well, to me, I would disagree because it, I mean, it did, he did break it up into four buildings that have had a lot of similarity to. The large duplexes across the street and up the street. Where instead of coming in with a eight story brick high rise. So.
I mean, it's similar, but to me it does not preserve the character. And the thing is, do we necessarily want to preserve the character? Character because most of our our houses that are of the older stock in Charlottesville will not hold the capacity. Of what we need for our housing market. So I don't know. To me, this is kind of a double edged sword.
Yeah, and to me, that sort of that exact, that particular phrasing. Maybe it's just where I live, but the connotation I think of is like north downtown, you know, from like Jefferson on up where. Or from Market on up where, you know, the neighborhood character or the the specific, you know, design and buildings is like. A nine story apartment building or like, you know, Altamont Circle. But, you know, that phrasing is used, has historically been used. To say nothing should be allowed here. That's, you know, taller than two stories. I like the word respect that I think Commissioner Russell said, and I like the word enhanced in terms of. Making them kind of a more positive and forward looking statement.
I'm fine with either one. I just want something more. Impactful than considered.
Yeah, I agree. It seems wishy washy.
I was thinking supportive.
I'm thinking too, maybe I'm not worrying, maybe I'm not, you know, saying it in the right way, but I'm I'm also thinking of protecting neighborhoods where that are. Subject to forces of gentrification. That those. You know, more modest and historic, but modest homes, housing residents who've lived there for generations, not be. Threatened by being being forced out by these larger newer developments. And so using using that preserved character to actually counteract some of the market forces that that might. Change the nature of that neighborhood. In a way we wouldn't want to see.
Um, well, okay, thank you all for that. I've been taking a lot of notes. I think we have some. Clear ways we can look at that. Sorry, Lyle, did you have something?
No, you're good.
Okay.
I'm trying to express of express the moment.
Got it. So I guess I would propose we go to the next one. That works for you all. And this is housing. So we lengthened it a bit, as you can see, but it seems to be warranted. So we we've called out again some of the points of emphasis here. We've used some of the statements that are found in the Affordable Housing Plan that you'll you'll see there because we obviously need a direct connection to that. But I'll stop and let you all read this for a second.
So I like these a lot. One thing I might, you know, consider as missing here is something I've really learned and didn't really know going into this whole gig. Is that kind of across the city, we already have these very diverse housing forms in every single neighborhood. And, you know, I'm looking at like the end of the second bullet point, and I'm wondering if there's maybe an opportunity to call out. That diversity in housing form. Or housing types already exists and and should be sort of. Celebrated and enhanced to steal some words from the old one, but don't use those.
I just had one question and it's for the third bullet point. And I was just wondering, have you talked to like city council? About the strategies for Charlottesville will make clear steps in addressing affordability and displacement displacement of people from their neighborhoods?
So some of that comes out in the the Affordable Housing Plan. So that'll that'll be more in the whatever follows after this this vision statement. So we don't. Yeah, that thought is that will come out in the rest of the chapter in that affordable housing planner strategies for that. So we have talked with. So we have a couple members of council on our steering committee. And we've spoken with different members of council about this in various ways, but we will be talking with them more with all of you on November 10.
Okay, thank you. One thing that I'd just like to throw out there. When we talk about afford affordability and displacement of people from their neighborhoods, something that I don't even think. That you can fix, but definitely I would appreciate you bringing it to council is. When you have new development in an older neighborhood. Your property assessment goes up. If I go to the bank and I get a loan based on my income for my property, because that's what the bank says I can afford. Then why is it that when new development comes in my neighborhood, my assessment goes up and I can no longer afford it because now I'm being assessed. At the income level of the person who moved down the street. When if I went to go apply for a loan for the house down the street, the bank would say I couldn't afford it. So I just think that is something that we have to keep in mind if we're gonna make clear steps to addressing displacement of people from their neighborhoods. So that's why I asked, had you had that conversation with council? And I don't think that is on y'all to decide that or figure it out, but I would appreciate. You guys bringing that up to them as a high importance in topic of conversation for that bullet point.
And I think and I are housing, Sarah had to jump off the color thing, but they can speak more to how that might be incorporated into the. Housing affordability plan because that document will be a lot more detailed, have some of that background information and it's likely incorporated in there. We heard, we definitely heard that and from the game.
Thank you.
I'm not a hundred percent on this because I'm seeing this for the first time. But number two, it may be helpful to include sexual identity and expression.
Got it, yep. Thank you for that. All right. Well, with that, I would suggest we move on to the next one. Again, recognizing that we'll be talking about these more as we move forward in this process. So. This is the historic preservation and urban design, or that's what it's called in the 2013 version. As we mentioned, we proposed to separate historic preservation and urban design, and we've renamed it here Preservation of Community History and Legacy. So, you know, I'd love for you all to read this and then we can talk more about. What you think about this. I know we talked about this already a bit, so I'll be interested to your thoughts.
That language is a bit jarring to me, history and legacy.
The title.
Yeah, that seems like that could go away. We don't want it to go in Charlottesville.
Agreed.
Deep Waters.
Yeah, I think our intent was to pull out sort of what in the. Texts or what that should mean in terms of community history and legacy, you know, expanding that to. You know, sort of be important to all people in Charlottesville, recognizing that neighborhoods have different histories or people have different histories that should be considered. And so. We want to make sure that intent would come out in the. The title, so we'll look at ways to adjust that.
It's 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 an important conversation to have, and it's something that the preservation community is grappling with at large, you know, it's traditionally been a movement that's honored only and and. Offered incentives even, you know, because of the honor honoring for. A narrative that leaves out a lot of has historically left out a lot of people and historic preservation needs to do better in that. You know, but I believe that the the values that. Older houses offer. Are worthy of of talking about even in, you know, in regards to what older housing stock does for. The affordable housing picture for the sustainable, you know, not contributing to to new continuing to contribute to new building construction, but preserving what we have. You know, I don't think we always, everyone always thinks of preservation in that through that lens. I do. And I do not think, is it this page? I think it is on this page. I don't think we make that connection. You know, you talked earlier and I know you talked with some of the panelists about making those connections between the different chapters, and I think there's something lost here in just seeing preservation as. Shaving pretty things. That would be a big, you know, miss sight.
Yeah. Understood, I.
And so I am trying to compare what what we're envisioning. For Charlottesville to other cities. That have historic significance. I I don't think we're shooting for Williamsburg. Now, we do have a historic district, right? But this is, these words would be for the whole city, right? This is not just describing an historic district. So I think that maybe. Maybe that's a big picture issue that that this comprehensive plan could truly help Charlottesville decide are are. Are we trying to be a Williamsburg? Or do we see ourselves more as a a vibrant city that. Acknowledges tips its hat to the wonderful, you know, history. But isn't trying to be history. Does that make sense? And I'm trying to, I want to read, I would love to read something like that, that that gives me an idea of, all right, where are you going Charlottesville?
So, you know, I wonder if we should take more of a direct focus on architecture. And, you know, the built form itself, rather than kind of history as a general concept. So it seems like in terms of historic preservation. I mean, you really are sometimes going for two different things. I think usually in the context we're talking about it. We're talking about like, you know, old buildings and like the built form of downtown. Which, you know, I think most architects and certainly I think is, you know, far superior than most of the build forms we build nowadays. As anyone who's seen me walking down the mall yelling, you know, that building's illegal, that's illegal to build can vouch for. And so like, you know, maybe to lose some of that baggage. It would be better to take that explicit focus on exactly what we're looking to preserve with this chapter. I mean, on the flip side, right? Like outside of the planning commission, we have like the Historic Resources Commission, who is trying to look at, you know. Actual history or like history of people in the community, which I think is also important. I don't know like to what extent that really is reflected in. The text of the plan, but. You know, it's a, it's a much more difficult and nuanced discussion where you can kind of fall into these dangerous traps of celebrating the wrong things.
Yeah, Rory, I I think you're spot on. We can't forget this is a planning document. And so to, you know, to 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 talk on up to to aim it at structures. Tangibles instead of intangibles. I think is important for a document that's used the way this one will be used. It doesn't mean we can't. Reference intangibles, but it's really not helpful to a planner. Who's trying to interpret it seven years from now. So I I think we need to, I I agree with you that we need to help this document do what it's designed to do.
And and I would like to propose a counter argument that. The architecture of any period today, a hundred years ago. Is tied to the culture that created it. And what you're proposing is to separate the visual. Aesthetics from the culture that created it. And unless you understand the culture that created it. Then you don't really understand the piece of architecture that you're attempting to preserve and and then. Respect in new development.
Say more about how that relates to a an established historic district. Is is the historic district the the place where that is defined, described and understood, or is it the comprehensive plan?
Uh, both.
Okay.
I mean. I'm playing devil's advocate here and say that if we're gonna dig deep to say that the architecture defines the history of the people and their thoughts and who's making it. I don't know if I can feel comfortable moving forward saying that I want to necessarily preserve that history because a lot of the historical buildings. That were that are in place and not only in Charlottesville, but just in general in Virginia. Do not reflect my existence or my existence being important. Jody, I'm not saying that's where you were going, but I'm saying if we're gonna use that. If we're gonna use that statement.
That you're, there's a wonderful, rich African American history that's here. History doesn't just mean white privileged mi- men.
I never said that. I said that if we're gonna use that statement, then we need to be careful about the statement because some of the historical buildings. Of Charlottesville do not reflect. Everyone who's now here. And if we're trying to move forward, then we need to be cognizant of that. I never said that we don't have good, rich, black history, Latino or anybody else. I literally only said. That if we're gonna use the statement, that the building reflects the architecture's thought of during that time period. We don't have a great history. Of of us being reflected in those time periods, hence as to why, when we were just in the other chapters, we've had to mention. We want equity. We want racial equity. So we can't have it in some chapters and bring it up and then make these blanket statements and think that. That's not gonna be an issue.
It it's not a statement of intent. It's a statement of fact.
Well, a statement of fact will also be that I cannot support an architecture or history that does not include me or all people in this city.
I don't know what, why you think it doesn't include you.
It's not representative of who I think we want to be if we're moving forward. That's a, that's a clear representative of our past that we clearly. Should not keep wanting to move forward with.
If I may, we've had decades of urban renewal, like everything that John West breathed on is gone. Everything that Jefferson breathed on is there. We have told one story. It's a little bit late to start preserving the other story because we tore it all darned, but.
Well, no, I think it's it's not too late because we haven't chose to protect certain areas. We have not chose to put local design controls on. Areas like Kenton Page, like Fysil, historically African American communities, though they are recognized at the national level as being historic. We at the local level do not impose. Design regulations in the same way that we do north downtown. So those areas are safe from. Demolition and and maybe they stay single family zoning while other areas unnecessarily incur burdens of development developmental pressure. So that's an inequity that in fact, preservation, if applied correctly, could help remedy. It can, it can help preserve what stories. And physical, you know, architectural history history we do have that reflects a different story and a more a broader view of the history of our community.
And that's totally fine. I just want to make sure that we are careful with our words. That's all I'm saying is when you say something. I can interpret it one way and you can interpret it another, and that's with anything.
Well, Liz just says it better than I do. I'm not very good with my words.
No, and I don't think it's just you have to think it's in general. And I think maybe it could be because we come from two different perspectives. Not saying that I know you respect my perspective, but we still come from two different perspectives. So I'm just saying that I think we definitely need to be very cognizant of the words that we use and what we're trying to portray with those words is all I'm saying.
I I absolutely agree. You know, I think if we back up a little and just start with what does what does what does sensitive design offer? It offers all the things that we when we walk through a well-designed historic neighborhood, we feel a certain way because it has these things that everyone in new development is trying to do. Human scale, relationship to the street, front porches that offer conversation. You know, it's everything Jane Jacobs talked about in The Life and Death of American Cities about about good urban design. So I think this is all very important conversation and I'm so glad we're having it. But, you know, if we maybe back up it, what is the role of respecting the qualities that these older neighborhoods, houses and and, you know, not on the individual level, but as a whole, offer to residents? And how do we make efforts to keep those? But that's what I think the role of the preservation chapter should, the vision of that should reflect.
All right, so we're gonna rework this a bit. Which I, you know, I appreciate all these comments. I think we did perhaps get too far away on it with this, especially in the first statement sort of from the design intent with this. But I think that reflects the conversations we were having with the community, wanting to see, you know, all sorts of narratives reflected in the city. And so I think we want to think about ways to keep that as we're we're looking to address this. I guess one final question here, and I know we're at eight forty, so I want to keep us going. But we talked earlier about splitting historic preservation and urban design. Are there thoughts after looking at this about whether we're open to bringing urban design into the land use chapter? Whether we bring sort of all of that into the land use chapter and expand that? You know, whether we're we have some elements of design in in both chapters? Any preferences related to that?
I think personally I'd need to see more of the proposed goal goals, I guess, and strategies. And then and then maybe it becomes clear. I don't know if I'm just pushing punning it down the road.
No, I agree with you. This is just the the very top and the, like I said before, the devil's in the details. So I'd like to see what the details are farther down, the strategies and the supporting information.
I I was actually against the idea when I first heard about it, but I'm now I'm sort of falling in love with it because history, design and land use, they're all haunted by the same ghosts. They're all dealing with the same issues. So maybe we should treat them together.
Yeah, I'm I'm thinking the same thing, Lyle, that that why don't we? I mean, these are old terms and words I've seen in comprehensive plans of other of other places. I I like the idea. We go ahead and 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 own the the ghosts that they all carry. But then with the details, the bullet points that follow these these mile high statements, we really need to, we really need to be specific about what we mean when historic districts and and preservation of character, things like that. I I I like the idea too. Let's let's eat the whole elephant here, you know?
Well, and and I'm coming to the the viewpoint that just this conversation shows that preservation has is is being on the surface is interpreted to be one specific thing when actually it is far more than that and it affects the entire city and it expect it affects urban design. And it's not just historic buildings or landmarks.
Jennifer, do you are you aware of a of another municipality that has has tried to broad stroke these three ideas?
I don't have a specific example right now, but I will I will see what I can find and I will provide that to you all if we can find that.
Got a few. Just as a as a as a point to keep in mind as you work through this particular issue. When we have zoning, when we have a toolkit to implement this plan, it will have a spectrum of tools. It'll it'll have, you know, dials that are turned up and down that do different things. And preservation is, you know, total preservation is at one end of the spectrum and transformation is at the other end of the spectrum. And we'll be coding for every point in between. So one of the important things to think about is is try not to box these things too much into being a different conversation when they are in many ways part of that same conversation. Historic preservation could be about the preservation of a use of land, for example, not even a structure. So they they all end up on this same spectrum. And what what is specifically Code Studio or firm needs help with is how we're going to be turning those dials as we move forward? And how many we give you, you know, how incremental do you want them to be? How coarse or how fine grained do you want them to be? That will be part of that conversation coming out of the diagnostic before drafting can begin. Because this is a project in which really the drafting has to happen, you know, principally once and and then get tuned up, refined, et cetera, but move forward. This is not one where we can put a draft on the table and have everybody throw up their hands and say, we don't like that at all. Where did that come from? So we definitely need the strength of these vision statements working down into the lower levels so that the plan can provide us that clear guidance about how to build that toolkit for you.
If I may, I'll offer some advice on on the zoning code review. We've done the most recent work on West Main and downtown. It's not perfect, but it's I think it's the strongest stuff we've got. So if you're going going to consider keeping anything, please consider that.
Yeah, and I mean, one last thing I'll say is to me, I I can't get across away from this dichotomy between what what we're looking for with historic preservation. You know, I'm looking at a map of our historic districts and there's certainly some that are preserved because of their their form, right? You know, like the downtown, the corner have good land use patterns that predate the automobile. Then I'm looking at like, you know, Park Street and like Gildersleeve Wood, and they have absolutely garbage urban forms. But some rich white people lived there once and, you know, built some cool houses. So, you know, maybe we want to keep those for their architectural qualities. But, you know, to me, it's there's a really big difference between whether we're preserving things for their, you know, old urban forum that can't be built anymore because we have a whole bunch of regulations that require accommodating automobiles. And, you know, whether we want to preserve a building because Thomas Jefferson ate dinner there once. And I I don't know how you square that circle because it looks like to me, we've applied the exact same zoning tool towards both of them.
But don't have to in the future.
All right, so what I'm hearing is we should look at combining land use chapter with this historic preservation and urban design chapter. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, I I'm really interested in in a is in a new tool, a tool that, you know, or are using a tool in a different way. I think that's because we we are in a different time, so. I I agree the 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 first when it when it comes out, you can't you can't throw it back. You've got to you've got to let that first draft stand with roots all the way into the document. So and I don't have the answer for that, but I I do like the idea of of bringing them together, urban design and preservation, and then breaking it out later.
Yeah, I think there's certainly room for that in the structure of the plan. There's often sort of subsets within any of these chapters, headings that really explicitly break things up a bit.
Jenny, just speaking for myself, I'm open to the idea of exploring it. I'm not wanting to make a decision right now, though.
I guess in terms of moving forward to the next phase of community engagement, we're we need some sort of path to follow for that. I think to propose for people to weigh in on so we can have some review of these initial statements in the coming weeks is is the plan. And so I think we will need to take one direction on that for now, but that doesn't mean it needs to be the final in the end. That makes sense. Okay, let's go to the next one because and I know recognizing we're at ten to nine. This was one that I think is really important to look at because there's not an existing community engagement chapter, but that was part of our charge going into this was to create one. And so we've drafted some statements here that I'll pause and let you read.
One thing I'd like to say here, sorry for always speaking first on these. I don't know if I'm just skipping ahead and cheating, but like especially in that third paragraph, I think is where I'd put this. I think a big part of community engagement needs to be not just about soliciting input, but about broadcasting what's happening. So what I find walking around the city, talking to people is that they have no clue what is happening here. Like they barely know this stuff exists. They don't even know what zoning is. They certainly don't know, like we had a work session tonight on a proposal in Fightville and and the comprehensive plan that's going to shape the city's future. So like, having a really robust system to communicate that that information out there. And I mean, it goes hand in hand with with transparency, openness and clarity. But, you know, really being clear about what is happening and and having things available and easily accessible so that people can can go see for themselves and then tell their friends or whatever. So that, you know, when you think, wow, what's going on with this street, like four people have died there already this year? What's the city gonna do about it? You can like Google, what is Charlottesville doing with this street and the Fifth Street McIntyre plan? Sorry, keep harping on that one.
Timely. One concern that we got out of the 2018 comprehensive plan in trying to really change the way we did engagement is we found that it's much harder to talk to some people than other people. Some people you do a a public meeting and they'll just come and tell you it's lovely. Some people, they won't come. You have to go to them. It's terrible. It's hard. It's expensive. Takes time. Clarifying that we will are willing to do that work would be helpful.
I think one thing that just the city in general is gonna have a charge with is trying to figure out how do we captivate that audience who doesn't know? And in their mind, doesn't care because they don't think that is important. So I think that's a lot of with our younger people where you have that disconnect because in their mind, they're like, oh, it doesn't matter. It's not important. It doesn't directly affect me when we all know that it does. So and I think that's why we have you guys here because we've already attempted to try to connect to those people and we weren't able to. And I think it's just a matter of having to be creative of what ways and means can we come up with to try to engage people, not so much because we want to tell you that your opinion matters, but to start from step one to say, hey, this is important because just to get people interested. Because I just know a lot of young people, including myself, up until maybe the last, what, six, seven years, public policy just was not for me or wasn't my thing. It wasn't until I was introduced to it and explained why it was important and what the importance of it and significance was directly to me is which changed my outlook. So I think that's just a challenge we're we're all facing. No matter how much you put it out there, no matter how many meetings you have, if you can't get a person to understand why the meeting is important or why they need to be involved and have an input, you can spend all the dollars you want. We're still gonna be spinning wheels and we'll be back with Jennifer and her team in another three years.
I I'd also put in there that it's it seems to be easier to get reactive input. You know, people who are disenfranchised or dissatisfied, you're going to be able to get data from, right? People who are content aren't, you know, you're gonna have, we're gonna have to come up with a mechanism to engage or create some reactivity. That's that's what I believe about the the silent people who are they just they they don't want to engage in some of the discomfort of talking about things that they're not comfortable talking about. So that's what I think is 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 kind of exciting to think that we're in a time where we really want to do that. We we don't want the the satisfied people to remain silent. You know, we want to invite them into the conversation.
I I I think I I disagree with you, Reverend Heaton. Advocacy and involvement is a privilege when you have time to do that. And it's the job of planners and government and staff to work to engage with those that have not historically had a voice because that voice has been overlooked. And that's a real challenge. It's I I don't know how to solve that. But what's encouraging about having it as a vision statement in your in your comprehensive plan is that you can point, someone can point to that and say, this is why we need to hire that new position because our comp plan says we value this in our community. So as a, you know, what the comp plan can offer, it's a start.
I I guess one of the things I'm thinking about is when we were doing the the entryway to the university and how we tried to get input from students, right? And we we tried several creative ways. Now, I don't know that we were that successful ever, but we acknowledge that this is a real it's a real challenge to to get input from everybody.
Or even some.
Especially those, I guess, who have other distractions. I don't know. We I don't think we did well at all at getting input from students.
As I recall, they got zero students.
Right.
And never took the suggestion of going to the dining hall that was right there with.
And that's that's kind of what I'm talking about is is.
Our budget for their smart.
We gotta we gotta come up with some way to jostle people.
At least expecting a minimum would be helpful.
Something I'm thinking about in terms of this is the the recent 10th and Grady smart scale proposal where it it really seemed to blindside a lot of people that it was even happening because they had no idea it was happening. But as soon as they found out, a lot of people mobilized, talked to each other and engaged. And I don't know who just said something about reactivity, but, you know, in some ways reactivity or, you know, reaction i- is something of a good thing that we can play off of in that if you if you're getting the information out there sufficiently, someone will hear eventually and will react to it. You know, it's like when the neighborhood I was living in, when I was living in a duplex, decided to try to get duplexes banned in the neighborhood and nobody told me at all. I had no idea until like a year ago that that ever happened. But would I have said something like, hey, why the hell are you trying to ban people like me from the neighborhood? Like fifty fifty chance. If there was free pizza, ninety percent.
Yeah, I think that I think all those are a good point. I don't think they necessarily, you know, to Reverend Heaton's point of wanting people to weigh in, even if they're satisfied. I think that that is, you know, they can be satisfied and still support the changes that maybe are coming out in the plan or whatnot. And so I think from my perspective that we want to hear from everyone, whether you like what we're proposing. whether you like what we're proposing or whether you don't like what we're proposing, we need, we need to know either way. And that was sort of what I was taking from your statement. But I think along with that goes, we need to be able to reach people so that they know what's going on, so they understand what's going on, so they can tell us what they think, you know? We can, so I think I heard that from all of you. Yes, it all builds and we'll work to make some of that more clear in this, but.
I think one thing I'd also add is like, we need to reduce the barrier to engagement. So, you know, if it's going to council, that is a lot. As someone else said just now, like that's a privilege for people with time on their hands. If it's like responding to a text that got blasted out or like even an online survey, which is a little tougher because it's proactive, it's a lower barrier to entry. And like anytime you were looking for input from people who aren't like really pissed off. Because like, you know, if if you have a high barrier to entry, you need people to both react strongly enough that they care and get over that barrier and have the privilege of like having the expendable time or effort to do that, right? And so if you have a lower barrier, you will get people who are more okay with it or ambivalent and who don't have to or don't have the time to spend even even more on it.
And while I think that definitely having the time is a privilege, but I also feel like if we use the example of the ladies of South First Street, if you make people feel that what they feel and their voices are actually going to be heard and that there's going to be a reaction from the work that they put in, they will find the time. And they will make the time. It's just like with anything else in life. If it is important to you, you're going to make the time for it. But we have to, we have to find a way to present this information to make people think it's important, well, to make them understand that it's important to them. Whether it's our regular citizens, our UVA students, just in general. I think we're just in a time where the circumstances are. It just doesn't seem that prevalent to me. So why am I going to make the time if it's not prevalent to me? So I think that's where we are. How do we make this information that we know is very important and directly affects all of us? How do we get that message out to our public?
And if I can just add from the Engage standpoint, in terms of some of the things that we also heard early on, Tania, to your point, I think there is also that the issue of accessibility also combined with just the expectation of, as you said, if I come out, if I invest the time, am I just talking into, you know, a silent microphone? And am I only showing up because someone wants my face there? Someone wants my head count as part of the numbers to say that I was there. And we certainly heard a lot of the criticism or critique or skepticism from folks around whether or not it's worth their time to engage in the public process, whether that's for something very short term, like going to a meeting and feeling like they're going to leave the meeting frustrated or feeling like they're going to be stuck in a five hour meeting. Or it's something more long term, like investing in the planning process and being jaded by the last several decades and not really sure of if this process is going to really result in an outcome once this document is in final form. So again, just kind of echoing all those things, but you know, especially things that we heard on the ground in the first part of the year, you know, it's, it really is a very comprehensive approach that we need to take when we're thinking about how are we talking about engagement in the comp plan? Because it goes on both sides. It goes on the sides of getting the people to the table, but it also goes on the side of what might need to shift on the public process side to make it a more welcoming, inviting and accessible space for people to actually enter into, whether they are coming to the table themselves or you're bringing the table to them.
Do you think it's worth in this section acknowledging in some way capturing that, understanding that this hasn't always been achieved in the past? Or, you know, I don't know. It seems like we've talked about a whole lot of things here and they aren't all captured on this, in this text about writing some paths wrong. I'm not referring to anything specifically. I'm thinking kind of generally understanding that community engagement is difficult. This is what we, this is our vision statement, something along those lines.
Yeah, I think there's room to do that. I mean, we want to focus on sort of the future facing, but with that we can reflect on the past and say what we're looking to address as we move to the future. So I think I'm fine with that, trying to find a way to.
I guess what I'm saying is all of this is achieved by, this is achieved by building trust. It's a, it's a process of continuously building trust in your relationship, in your, in our relationship with the community.
Maybe it's enough to say in recognition of the fact that past engagement by the city has been limited and ineffectual or something like that. We're wanting to find new ways. And the devil's going to be in the strategies associated with these statements. And what does that mean? Advocating for creative ways, methods, being, being, well, just that, just, just, and then who does it? In which of these commissions and which of these boards? How does it filter down? And who's going to be charged with coming up with these creative ways of getting citizen engagement?
I think that can come out in some of those specific strategies around, you know, taking, how do we implement this vision? So yeah, I agree, we'll have to get to that level of detail. Thank you, Jody. I know we're after nine, so I'm sorry I broke my promise on being done by nine, but I do want to check in with the chair and anyone else. Are we, should we keep moving forward on this? Are we, do we have a hard stop?
Let's get to it.
Okay. All right, let's go to the next slide, please. So this is the community facilities chapter, which was one that, one of the first that we adjusted the title on. And it was a simple title change, but it seemed necessary because it, community facilities was not necessarily really clear to people about what was in the chapter. And so we've proposed some changes here in bold. One thing I do want to point out, and I know you may be reading this, is part of what's included in the community facilities chapter is community safety, including, you know, police, fire EMS. And we were getting feedback in May and June of this year. And we were all having a lot of discussions around the relationship of the police department with communities. And we got a lot of input related to that on the survey. And we have reflected that a bit here in terms of talking about community oriented public safety, sort of expanding on existing statements that were in the chapter, about having, you know, one of the best emergency response systems, but clarifying what that could mean based on what we had heard. But I would like to hear your thoughts on, you know, is this the purview of the comprehensive plan to lay some of this out? Or are there ways we can better define that in this plan?
I think it would be irresponsible not to address, you know, the issues at the moment, I feel like.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it was, if you've read through the engagement summary, it was sort of one of the things we heard the most from people. And so I think we do want to make sure it's reflected in some way when we're thinking about the future of the city. But in terms of, you know, this chapter or other chapters, we just want to make sure we're including it in the right way for the comprehensive plan. So that was our goal or continues to be our goal.
To me, it's. Building.
Go ahead, Miles. Um, I think this was discussed in the, in the, in one of the steering committee sessions, a question about where recycling, is that in the, is that in the solid waste stream? Where is any sort of reduction of or effort to reduce waste?
Yes, you're right, that did come out in some of those conclusions. And I think we included it in that sort of solid waste in that last section. But I think maybe that needs to be more clear about what we mean with, with that. Thanks for bringing that up. That was a, and then we can tweak. Any other thoughts about this chapter? The proposed revisions or the title change, it's a small one, but any, any other thoughts? All right, hearing none, let's move to the next one, please. Economics.
I'm sorry, I just have one, one thought as we leave that slide. And it had to do with the very last sentence, which talks about areas in the city. I think it'd probably be important to recognize in looking at environmental and especially water, any sort of effort that it has downstream, literal downstream effects. And we're, we're thinking about these things, not just in terms of city, but in being good stewards of the earth and being more, you know, not just myopic, how this plays into the larger.
Yeah, and I think.
State of the world.
Because these things, you know, in particular, water, wastewater, solid waste, all are run by these regional, you know, the RWSA and RSWA. I think it would make sense to call out the region and I don't know about world, because, I mean, unlike in the environmental sustainability chapter, like climate is obviously super important, but it seems a little bit out of scope for this particular thing.
Or localized, regionalized. No, I think calling out the regional, you know, that makes sense. And I certainly take your point, Liz, about the downstream effects and sort of being good stewards when we're thinking about some of this. So we'll look to incorporate some of that. I'll propose we move to the next one. Go back to the next one to keep us moving. Thank you. So no, sorry, that was, you were right. Thank you. You can, economics sustainability.
No, one more.
I'm sorry, that was, that was my, I said too many things at once, so thank you for that. So for this chapter of economic sustainability, we proposed a title change. Right now it's economic prosperity and opportunity. Talking about, you know, a lot of the revisions we proposed here were really emphasizing sort of shared prosperity as opportunity, you know, as there's economic growth in the city. That was something we really heard was that people want to see more opportunities tied directly to resident opportunity with some of this economic growth. So I'll let you read this for a second and then I'm happy to chat about it. Any thoughts on, on these provisions?
One thing I might add, though, maybe it belongs in, you know, the next level deeper is talking about sort of green businesses and the green economy. Really, that's probably our strongest growing sector right now is renewable energy industry. You know, solar, wind, not in actually having those things here, but those companies. So I think a specific call out to promoting that would be cool.
Hearing silence, go ahead.
This also might be a more detailed strategy, but something I've heard a lot is ladder of opportunity. Making sure that there are ways to change your life, ways to learn those things.
Yeah, and we, we talked about that a bit with the steering committee and we tried to pull that out, reword it in that last sentence that's bolded, you know, pairing economic, local economic growth with creation of employment, training and other opportunities for residents, sort of staying like, saying what that ladder of opportunity really is. But if that needs to be made more clear, we're certainly open to keeping that language in there. That's sort of something that's recognized.
And if I could, sorry, just jump in real quickly. I think maybe something to at least think about is the idea of community wealth building as part of the kind of vision for this. I know earlier in the meeting, there was the conversation briefly around like, you know, assessments going up in a neighborhood and you don't have access to alone. And thinking about that kind of thing in terms of a strategy, big picture vision of community wealth building in terms of financial institutions, things like land trusts, co-ops, community gardens, and how those all interconnect as part of a local economic ecosystem that's giving everyone benefits of the economic growth we're seeing, which I think connects to the ladder of home opportunity or ladder of opportunity. But I know there's a lot of cities across the country and organizations that are thinking explicitly about community wealth building and all the institutions associated with it. But that's my only thought.
Not just individual.
Right.
Right.
Okay, great, thank you, Michael. All right, I'm going to, I'm going to keep us moving on that. The next one, please, was the one that was titled urban, urban environmental sustainability. And we have proposed a new title of environment, health and energy for that. You know, recognizing the content that's already in that draft chapter from 2018, but also what we've been hearing from the community, what we anticipate will be added to this chapter. So I'll give you a second to read that.
So one thing I'd say is low carbon footprints isn't going far enough. We need to be working towards carbon neutrality. And council has made pledges to do that of a 45% reduction in carbon footprint by 2030 and carbon, full carbon neutrality for the city by 2050, which is, I guess, towards the end of where this plan is thinking about. So a bolder statement there, I think, would be appropriate.
All right, any other thoughts around this at this point?
I'm not, I just, I'm not crazy about the phrase green city.
Yeah, we pulled that in from the previous version, but we're open to changing.
Doesn't date, it's sort of a sign of the times. And I think, I don't know, I just have, I just have strong feelings about when we throw around words like that. Everything after that is great. I just, I don't know if it's necessary to say.
I had the same thought. It feels very 2018.
We're just going to paint everything green.
And we can look at, you know, I think we could tweak, change, change that wording a bit, just that green city part. Yeah, I think what comes after that really explains what we mean by green city anyway. So I will look at tweaking that.
Yeah, I mean, something.
Climate resilience is a wonderful new phrase.
Well, I was about to hate on that, but for city, something like environmental leader, something like that to really show that we intend to be better than the generic city, which is pretty bad, actually. But in terms of resiliency, climate resiliency is important, right? There's going to be climate impacts on Charlottesville directly. But ultimately, you know, we're not coastal. We're not in a, you know, particularly natural disaster prone place. To me, part of climate resiliency is, yes, sir, knocking some wood here. Look, we're going to have some impacts directly and we need to be resilient to that. But another huge part of adapting to this future of climate change is accommodating changing climates in other places and climate refugees and, and adapting as a city, you know, both in terms of our, you know, our population and in terms of our land use patterns to, you know, to, to deal with that, right? You know, tide water is going to be underwater by the end of this planned vision period, so.
Well, yeah, if we're going to be as specific as to talk about green can, tree canopies, right? Maybe we should be as specific about carbon neutral or carbon reductive. You know, that, because that seems everybody as specific as tree can. You know, that, because that seems everybody's specific as tree canopy.
Agreed, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with making, uh, you know, making some of those statements we talked about earlier, especially with regards to the climate commitments, and I think thinking about, um, issue of climate refugees and sort of accommodating changing climates in other places, while addressing the fact that there will be changes in Charlottesville as well, I think, um, that can certainly be a piece of this. And it's something I have not heard in, in these other discussions in Charlottesville yet, so. All right. With that, I'll propose we go on to the last one, which is transportation.
Yep.
Okay. And so we've kept transportation, the, the title the same, and we've pulled out some specific statements in bold, as with the others, uh, mostly focusing on connectivity and integration with land uses. Uh, we've also pulled in some statements about parking toward the end, so, um, maybe a second to look at that.
It should probably say something about integrating with the regional transportation plan. And that's only because I'm on the transportation citizens advisory.
Yeah, I totally agree. That is something that certainly came out in our discussion, and it should, should be in there.
It could go, it could go in that second bullet somewhere.
Yes, completely agree.
Is that last phrase where necessary to support necessary here? That seems like a supportive idea.
Um, I think you're right, that could, um, come out in maybe some of the strategies, how we identify where, you know, is necessary is Portland use or whatnot. I would be open to removing that, um, that section from here. Any other thoughts on, on that?
So I'm a little confused what you're, what we're saying there. We're saying that the parking that remains should contribute to the quality of the public realm by like being in back alleys or underground or whatever. Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Trees.
Okay. Yeah, I agree, that seems a little secondary.
Okay.
But, I mean.
Well, and Rory, wouldn't, wouldn't you prefer that there's actually some kind of tipping of the hat to the idea that we won't always be using cars, you know?
Well, I like the first part of the sentence.
Right.
But the, the, you know, hide parking, like the sort of stuff we've seen, like the Form-based code we reviewed last year, about like hiding the parking that does exist, well, that Form-based code required a lot of parking, but, uh, I think, I think that stuff is good. We should hide parking, um, but it's, I don't know, actually, I, I'm ambivalent on whether it should be here. Because, I mean, the centrality of, like, service parking everywhere really does directly impact the urban forum that makes the other goals impossible.
Does this say that?
Yeah, I mean, maybe we could just say that more directly, you mean?
Right, because I agree.
Yeah, I do, I do too. I think it could be a little more blunt.
So, um, uh, mentioning how parking can impact the urban forum in ways that might prohibit or inhibit the achieving, achieving other goals we're, we're putting forth.
Yeah, or flip that, flip that over, right? You know, follow minimized with, uh, in order to
Achieve.
Urban forum that, et cetera.
Give it a why.
Let me see here. Okay. Okay, I think that makes sense. We'll look at some tweaks there. Thank you for that. And with that, I'm gonna close out this discussion of, of this part. We have a couple more slides on engagement. LaToya will speak briefly to that, but I just want to emphasize, uh, in the coming days, as y'all are thinking about this, or if you think about this, feel free to send us any other thoughts. We'll be working on revisions. LaToya, you wanna go through some of the upcoming engagement piece here to wrap us up?
Sure. Go to the next slide. And the next slide, thank you. So just gonna quickly highlight, uh, some of the activities that we're thinking about doing, um, over the next few weeks. First off, I'll just start with kind of the goals and objectives of what we're trying to get to between the end of October and through the month of November, and probably early December as well. So obviously, we've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes to try to get to the point where we can go back out into the community. And so this next iteration going out is gonna be a combination of, uh, reiterating or, or, uh, sharing what we learned and what we heard in our earlier engagement efforts. And that includes the survey results, that includes the many different conversations that we've had virtually. So really trying to just make sure that folks understand what the different voices and ideas were that came out of that, um, early engagement process. We want to make sure that folks also get a good primer on what the comp plan is. Not just the content in the document, but also as a tool, what it can do, um, what the purpose of the revisions and updates are, and how that plays into Charlottesville life going forward. This will also be a, a time for us to talk about the draft of the affordable housing strategy and to talk through these guiding principles and vision state statements we've been, you know. The one common thread or link that I want to mention here before we talk, talk about the kind of different tools we'll be using is, you know, in our, in our team conversation, particularly as we started looking at some of the draft, uh, housing, affordable housing recommendations and strategies. You know, the biggest thing for us is making sure that folks understand how everything is tied together, and also how everything is tied to a lot of the feedback that people have been giving, not just to us in this process, but probably the same feedback that some of you have heard over the last several years. Whether it's feedback that pertains to housing or economic development or transportation. So particularly with housing, we want to make sure that we're not losing folks in the jargon, jargon of maybe different housing tools that might get recommended. The big thing for us is to make sure that people understand, if you've got a concern about housing affordability, this is how the proposed recommendations actually address that concern. Um, and so we want to really make that link between, um, what the feedback is, what the concerns are that folks in the community have, and how that's being addressed in both the housing strategy and then the overall comp plan. Next slide, please. So in terms of outreach, um, you'll see a couple of tools here that we've, uh, used in our first round of engagement. Some of these will be, uh, repurposed and redesigned or adjusted accordingly. But we're obviously gonna be using a variety of outreach methods. So a lot of the tools that you're already familiar with, um, we still have the project website, so that'll still be a central, uh, clearinghouse for folks to get information and for us to be able to share data. We will still be doing, um, virtual engagement for the most part. We will be integrating some in-person opportunities, which I'll discuss in a moment, but in terms of our virtual engagement, webinars and discussions that'll be focused on the comp plan and housing plan. We'll have kind of a virtual meeting set up, uh, which is just a page on the website that will give folks information to walk through the process of the comp plan, um, and then they'll be able to provide, uh, feedback, questions, ideas, input through the website. We will also have some additional small group discussions, probably not as many as we had in the first go-round of this effort. But we do want to still have some very targeted small group discussions with folks who, um, are, make up that hard-to-reach population or the population of folks who typically does not engage in the public process. We'll set up virtual, we're calling office hours, which will just be opportunities when, uh, Jenny and I can be on Zoom, be available to chat, and as well as folks from our other, uh, parts of our team, like zoning and housing, can be available to talk with folks. And they can call in almost like a hotline via, via Zoom camera or via phone and actually ask questions. We'll probably have these office hours structured around particular topics so that we can have a housing, yep, go ahead, Lyle, I see the finger. Oh, you're on mute, Lyle, you're on mute.
Sorry. I don't know if this can be done safely, but, um, the people who are hard to reach aren't going to get on Zoom to talk to you.
Yep. So.
You know, this, um, how is it, is it possible to safely engage with those people in real space where they are?
Yes, so let me get to that in one second. Let me get, let me get in there, just hang tight. Um, so the virtual office hours, um, and then, aside from the virtual activities, we are going to do some very targeted in-person pop-up events starting later in October. These will be designed in such a way, they will be, uh, COVID-safe events, so obviously, we will all be ducked out in PPE. We'll make sure that folks know that they are required to wear masks, um, when they come to us, but these will be very simple setups, as I like to call it. It's the come get information and leave, as opposed to the come and linger for 45 minutes to an hour approach to engagement. So we want to make sure that we are giving folks a space, particularly folks who are, who may not have been involved previously, uh, to get information, to learn about this process, to be able to get an idea of what's being talked about with the vision statements in the comp plan, what's being proposed as part of the affordable housing strategy. But to also be able to do so safely and quickly, and to be able to leave knowing how they can continue to stay involved in the process. I can personally say that I have done, um, one or two pop-up type events, um, for another client in Tacoma Park, Maryland, where I'm actually helping them with a, they're redoing, uh, their recreation center, so we're doing a whole planning engagement effort around that, and that started right when COVID hit. So there, there are certainly ones designed, um, that are, that are safe, that are sanitary, that, but that also still allow folks to give, um, really valuable input to the process. So we're definitely gonna be, uh, finalizing the locations of where those pops, pop-ups are gonna be, um, in the next few weeks, but we're planning to kick those off, probably towards the latter, the last week of October, and then going into November.
How do you pull information back from that?
So, uh, depending on the format that we use, so one format that I've used recently, um, actually involved having folks respond to quest, to questions on sheets of butcher paper that we ultimately took back. So it was, if you imagine a long table, and we had tables covered in butcher paper with questions, and folks would act, in this case, folks got their own unique set of markers that they received and they left with. Or if they didn't want to take them, we sanitized them, and they were able to actually write responses to questions on butcher paper, and they moved through stations. That's a more intensive pop, that's a more intensive, uh, pop-up style event than probably what we'll do in Charlottesville. We'll probably have something on a slightly smaller scale that would involve something to the effect of written comments with materials and utensils that can be sanitized, or where folks can take it away. Or having, um, things where folks can actually mark with stickers. I think there will be some level of verbal conversation as well, but I think to the extent that we can also capture feedback in writing, whether that's someone dictating something to us that we can write down on a shared board that folks can see, or they're receiving their own set of utensils where they can safely mark something down that can, um, that we can then take that information back and add it to our collective batch of information that we're getting. So I think there's a couple of different ways to do it.
That's encouraging. I've been freaked out about this.
So, um, one small recommendation that maybe could help is, I'm thinking, um, most of the people who we are not not, and when I say we, I mean, you guys, us in general, are not getting feedback from, they all have to go to the grocery store. I don't care what demographic you are, you have to go to the grocery store. And so I noticed, um, at several of the food lines, they had a table with the lady set up in a mask registering people to vote. So it may be advantageous to set up a table outside of a grocery store and just be like, hey, can you, almost kind of like we did, um, when we were at like Fridays after five, give them a couple of quick questions, something that they can respond to. Literature they can take with them, they can still go on about their day, but we can also reach them and get their feedback, and that's leading them where they are.
Yep, absolutely. I mean, locations, some locations we're considering include grocery stores, barber shops, and beauty salons. Obviously outside, not inside. Churches, church parking lots, particularly catching folks, you know, if, if there are churches that are holding Sunday services or Saturday services. You know, one thing that I would personally love to do is work with Sin Barreras to get something set up outside their office specifically to target, um, the Latino families that are using their services, and so we can get more, uh, more feedback from that group. So at laundromats, I mean, we're trying to be very, very creative in some of the spaces, um, that we know, uh, most of the folks who probably aren't part of this process are actually using on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and I'd add there's a whole bunch of, um, you know, like Latino and Oriental grocery stores that, uh, could be good too, to hit, uh, particularly targeted groups. The other thing I'd add is like, if you're having events where, uh, you're just kind of handing out, um, you know, stuff and hoping that they come by some other avenue later, to give input, um, try to grab their, uh, like contact information, um, especially like cell phone numbers. I've found in the past that, uh, just texting people, um, is, is by far the most effective way.
Yep, for, for most events, we, at least most events, I hear some interesting background noise, I don't know what it is. For, for most engagement events, I know that I have personally run, there's always some kind of a contact card that stays with us, so we can at least capture that information, because those are most likely folks who have not signed up online.
Well, I'm not sure where the other noise is coming from, but, um, you know, I think that, that pretty much wraps up our, our slides, so, um, LaToya, I didn't mean to cut you off if you had
Nope, I'm done.
Okay, cool. So
You guys know how to reach us, that's the contact info.
Thank you for sticking with us. I think this was a great discussion. We're gonna make some revisions based on what we heard. Send us any other thoughts you have.
Yeah, this, this was, uh, very helpful, and hopefully it was productive for you guys, but, um, I think it helped us a lot, so thank you for the effort.
Oh, thank you all.
Ms. Chrissy, is there any other business that you're aware of? She, where is she?
I'm right here, sorry. No, that is, that is our agenda for this evening.
Yes. All right, is there any other business before you move? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, someone second, you can wait, wait a second if you want to.
I just wanted to, I wanted to make a statement. Sorry, I couldn't find my unmute button before you made the motion, you know, that's normally my thing. I just wanted to say to our team, um, I know that was a lot, and I know you're probably like, wow, we did all this work and they tore us to pieces, but I just want to say thank you for your efforts. Hopefully, our goal of making our community a better place is gonna come from your efforts, so I just want to applaud you for that, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Yeah, we certainly expected and wanted discussion, so we were glad to have all of your input.
Thanks. Now, Tia, would you like to second the motion?
Second.
We are adjourned, guys, thank you. Thanks.
Everybody.